Welcome to the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five City Council meeting. City Council meetings are held in order for your elected representatives to accomplish the work of the city on the public's behalf. By law, these meetings are open to the public, so you can see the work as it is done. By law, these meetings are limited public forums and public input shall be on matters that fall under the legislative jurisdiction of the Snohomish City Council. Each regular meeting of the City Council has a general public comment period at the beginning, in which the public may comment for three minutes on matters that fall under the legislative jurisdiction of the City Council. In addition, public comment will be taken on each action item, and testimony will be taken at each public hearing. These public input periods are for the public to provide information for the council in its work, and are not a question and answer session. When public comment brings up an issue that a council member would like to investigate, the council member may ask for information from staff, deliberation, or under new business at the end of the meeting. In order for council and staff to focus on the work of the city, we ask that audience members keep conversations and other distractions to a minimum. Thank you. I'd like to remind council to make sure to use their microphone when speaking, and we'll go to roll call with our city clerk. Councilmember Burke?
Present.
Councilmember Flynn?
Present.
Councilmember Guzak?
I'm here.
Councilmember Heatherington?
Here.
Councilmember Coletta?
Present.
Council President Merrill?
Here.
Councilmember Niels?
Here.
Mayor Redmond?
I'm here, thank you. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight I am happy to start this meeting with a proclamation to name March two thousand and twenty-five as Agriculture Appreciation Month. And I want to point out, I will be giving copies of these proclamations to Nate Crowsey with Swan's Trail, and Bob and Sarah Beechey with Bob's Corn. Very happy to have you here representing the agriculture in our area, and I'll go ahead and read this and bring these over to you. So this is a proclamation of the city of Snohomish recognizing March two thousand and twenty-five as Agriculture Appreciation Month. Whereas the city of Snohomish is home to a rich agricultural heritage, with farms, nurseries, and related agricultural businesses contributing to the local economy, culture, and character of the community. And whereas local farms provide essential benefits, including fresh locally grown produce, dairy, meat, and other products that contribute to food security, sustainability, and the overall health and well-being of Snohomish residents and visitors. And whereas, agritourism plays a vital role in the economic development of the city of Snohomish by attracting visitors from across the region, supporting local businesses, and creating jobs through farm tours, pumpkin patches, you pick opportunities, seasonal festivals, wineries, farmers markets, and other agricultural experiences. And whereas, the economic impact of agriculture and agritourism extends beyond the farms themselves, benefiting local restaurants, lodging, retail businesses, and service providers, thereby fostering a vibrant and diverse local economy. And whereas, the preservation of farmland and the promotion of agritourism align with the city's commitment to sustainable development, environmental stewardship, and maintaining the rural charm and historic character of the Snohomish community. And whereas, the city recognizes the need to support policies, programs, and initiatives that protect agricultural lands, promote agritourism, and enhance the economic viability of local farms and related businesses. Now therefore, I, Mayor Linda Redmond, do hereby proclaim March two thousand and twenty-five as Agriculture Appreciation Month. The city of Snohomish acknowledges and supports the vital contributions of local farms and agritourism businesses to the local economy, environment, and community identity, and will continue to collaborate with local farmers, agricultural organizations, business owners, and residents to promote and enhance agritourism opportunities. Sign this eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all your work.
Thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Sarah, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's a good way to have some fun to start off the meeting. And now for a downer. No, sorry.
Whoa.
No, this is just an inside joke between Chris and me. I am very happy to have Chris Collier with the Alliance for Housing Affordability here to provide a Snohomish County housing update. Chris is our data guru, and he helps the city with understanding what our challenges are related to housing and some potential options for us to address them. So Chris, I understand that you have done a report recently of all the cities in the county, and that you are here to present data specific to Snohomish. So I will go ahead and let you take it away.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the invitation. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you turn up your volume or your microphone a little bit?
One second. One second. Audio settings. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better. Thank you, Chris.
So sorry, I quit the IT profession for a reason. Okay, let me share my screen here really quick. Thank you so much, Mayor Redmond, and all for the invitation to present tonight. Is my screen coming through okay on your end?
Yes, it looks good, Chris.
Okay, well, I will try to keep this to ten minutes. I understand you have a pretty packed agenda tonight. So if you have questions, please feel free to let me know, and I will provide, of course, this presentation as a PDF for you if you want to go over any information in more detail. But again, please ask me any questions you want as we go. A quick refresher on what the Alliance for Housing Affordability is: It is the cities listed here, including the city of Snohomish, the Housing Authority of Snohomish County, with the, it is a association of those cities to support the members in understanding, providing data and analytics, technical expertise, and outreach to understand and respond to the housing affordability crisis in Snohomish County, and support any response, city by city, as appropriate. The, you have seen this slide before, so I'll go through it really fast. This green bar is the net difference between new housing units and new households created year by year in all of Snohomish County, including the cities. We built eleven hundred and six more housing units than new households were created in two thousand and three. That surplus does not get erased in two thousand and four, two thousand and five. It adds up over time. You can see that any surplus of housing we had, if we started counting at zero in the year two thousand, is gone by two thousand and nineteen. Since then, we have rebounded in Snohomish County overall with a surplus of housing, which is almost exclusively apartments. Something that I'll show you specific to Snohomish, that I can also zoom out to the county in longer presentations, is how overall the county has seen ownership production stay low, and apartment construction has increased dramatically since two thousand and nineteen in the county overall. What this has done to price is just an update for the county, and I'll get to Snohomish in just a second. The median sale price for a single-family detached home in all of Snohomish County, again, single-family detached only, adjusted for inflation, has risen by over five hundred thousand dollars, or almost five hundred thousand dollars since the year two thousand. We're now sitting at eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars median sale price at about the end of November, beginning of December in two thousand and twenty-four, so more or less year end. However, most homes are not purchased with all cash, because that's just not how the world works. So let's say we put ten percent down on this home for the thirty-year fixed-rate mortgage, and the bank says no more than thirty-three percent of our mortgage, monthly mortgage costs can, or no more than thirty-three percent of our household income can go to our mortgage debt. That required income is one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. To be able to afford the privilege of buying that home and then paying a mortgage for the next thirty years, you as a household need to make one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in Snohomish County to afford that median house. What this does, or rather, this is fine if median household income has kept up, which this purple line, you can see, it has not. Again, all adjusted for inflation, the median household income is now sitting at one hundred and nine thousand dollars in Snohomish County. And the degree to which these two lines are diverging is the start of our real problem. It rolls downhill from here to townhomes and condominiums and to apartment rents. This piece is one that I would encourage you to take a look at, as the city of Snohomish has a fairly small rental market. It's hard to give you a really good idea of what rents are like for the city of Snohomish, but they're close to the county average. So as goes the county, so shall go Snohomish, more or less. We have seen rents decline in two thousand and twenty-three and through two thousand and twenty-four. However, rents for the year of two thousand and twenty-four are now ticking back up. We're still lower than the high watermark, but rents are rising again. I expect that rents will continue to rise into and through two thousand and twenty-five and onward. So this number, unfortunately, as much as we might say, hooray, rents are going down, I think that that will be a short-term thing. So, uh, let's see here. County takeaways, really quick. Prices are back rising after a cooldown in two thousand and twenty-three. However, the required income has never slowed down. That's largely due to interest rates. And sorry, that's a typo. It should say one hundred and ninety-four thousand a year. So the required income, the ability to afford a home, attain a home, has never been more difficult than it is at this moment today. We are making history every second. Unfortunately, we are leading the way in housing unaffordability in Snohomish County's long history. And again, we're sitting at one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars required to afford that median home in the county. Rents, like I said, are up a tenth of a percent for the year, still lower than two thousand and twenty-three's peak. That glut of apartment construction in two thousand and eighteen to twenty-two and early two thousand and twenty-four is my explanation for why rents have come down. But again, we, I can see the market absorbing those vacant units, and our vacancy rate is declining, and so rents are going to start going up again, absent some big new projects coming online. Median household income, it remains low, and so again, that creates that delta of about eighty, eighty-two, eighty-seven thousand dollars, and that's where our issue begins. Let's look at the city of Snohomish. Oh dear, why isn't that happening? There we go. My animations are out of order. I apologize. I didn't fix that. So forget the takeaways for just a second. Look at the pretty chart. This chart is for the city of Snohomish only. This is production of single-family residential units within the city limits, the current city limits of the city of Snohomish from nineteen forty until the present day. I can take this all the way back to eighteen ninety. It gets pretty sparse, because this is only units that are still standing. So it has a strong bias towards the present. But even with that bias, you can see that the city of Snohomish is unique in that it has produced a fairly steady rate of housing, in this case, single-family residential, for decades. This is not the norm in other cities. If you look at, for example, the city of Mount Lake Terrace, they built basically every single home that the city has right now in about the nineteen seventies to nineteen eighties. Maybe nineteen sixties to eighties. Snohomish is interesting and unique. In blue, stacked on top of these bars, you have manufactured and mobile homes. You can see that they are kind of disappearing into the modern day after two thousand and three. In green is middle density and accessory dwelling units. Middle density is townhomes, condos, duplexes, and a variety of smaller, again, middle-density type homes. And again, the city of Snohomish stands out as having a, again, a, it is unusual in comparison to its cities. Snohomish, all cities say that they're special and different and unique, but the city of Snohomish is actually special and unique because it does not follow typical patterns of Snohomish County cities. So this is a really interesting pattern, and there's a lot to learn and study. More work for Brook in the city's history, in what has given, what has supported this middle housing density throughout the decades. In purple, again, different multifamily condominiums. Multifamily condos across Snohomish County basically go extinct after the year two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven. The city of Snohomish is still producing a few of them as recently as two thousand and fourteen. Not a whole bunch, about forty in two thousand and fourteen. But that's, it's noteworthy that the city has continued to produce multifamily condominiums in spite of the multifamily or the condo liability law that was passed in Washington State in nineteen ninety-nine. So I've kind of take, hit on the takeaways at the top of the page. Again, I've start, top of the slide, I'm sorry for the mix-up in my animations. Production's still a little lower in the city of Snohomish than it has been in decades past. That's a trend that we see across the county. However, the variety that the city of Snohomish has produced and is producing is noteworthy and something that I would encourage you as a City Council Planning Commission and staff to examine, and look to ask, how do we continue this into the future? And ask yourself, what do you want into the future? Where do you want all of these bars and charts to go? Uh, let's see if I got my animations right here. Yes, I did. So this is a count of all the homes that sold in the city of Snohomish for under a hundred thousand dollars. Basically, nothing. This is the count of all homes that sold between one hundred and one and two hundred thousand dollars by year, again, all adjusted for inflation. What I'm doing here is showing you how the, the quantity of homes have sold by different price points. And you can see as we look at three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars, now we're really talking, a fair number of homes have sold. Four to five hundred thousand, five to six, six to seven, I'm starting to run out of colors here. Seven to eight, eight to nine, and nine hundred thousand to one million dollar homes. And so this, this tells two stories. One, that the number of homes selling in the city of Snohomish is pretty darn low compared to the last two decades of data. And two, what is selling for what price has changed dramatically as almost everything sold in the city in the year two thousand, for example, was for under four hundred thousand. Now it's almost all above four hundred. What this, oh, but the last, last piece, over one million dollars isn't, doesn't really jump off the page as it does in some cities. But still, let's compare these years apples to apples, taking away the fact that we're selling more or less homes regardless of price year by year. That is this abstract piece of art in the back. You can see how, as a, taking an absolute percentage of each year and comparing them, you can see how the number of homes sold have changed. So on a percentage basis, I should say. I didn't explain that very well. Nevertheless, take a look at, say, pink, or the kind of the chartreuse in the middle. Starts off as the, really, the upper echelons of sales in the year two thousand, two thousand and one, and now is almost nothing down in two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four. And that's our home selling between four and five hundred thousand dollars in the city. So really, the sit, the makeup of sales in the city of Snohomish has changed dramatically in the last twenty-five years. And this is all homes. This is single-family, resident, townhomes, condos, multifamily, or manufactured homes, mobile homes, it's the whole works. It's everything that I can find for sale for ownership in the city of Snohomish. So this is just how thing, how affordability and sales have changed through a couple of different lenses. This is one of the slides that I'll go over quickly. It's just a data slide for if you're curious about what the sale price is between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-four, how much is sold for what. Feel free to look at that in the follow-up PDF of this presentation as we go. So I'm skipping that, or moving forward for time. Same approach as the previous two, three slides ago. This is the number of apartments that have been built and are still standing in the city of Snohomish. This is one hundred and, sorry, excuse me. This is five-unit apartment buildings to fifty-unit apartment buildings. It's five different types, all mashed together for brevity's sake. And interestingly, a one hundred, fifty-one to one hundred unit apartment building was built in twenty, the year two thousand and twenty. So the city of Snohomish is characterized exclusively by small-scale development of apartment buildings until the year two thousand and twenty. So what do we want to do with this is an interesting question. Certainly, something that jumps off the page of me is that your high point for apartment construction was the late eighties and early nineties. And apartment construction has declined significantly in the city since then. And again, this information is presented in the context of the comprehensive plan. What do we want to do with our plan? What do we want to see happen in the city in terms of implementation of the comprehensive plan? Let's see, move ahead. There we go. The rental summary for the city of Snohomish, I mentioned the rental market is fairly small in the city, so it's hard to get a really good read on this, but from January of two thousand and twenty-four to December of two thousand and twenty-four, you have the average rental, rental rate for units in the city, January to December, and then compare it against the county overall. And you can see how the city of Snohomish compares. I don't have any records for those periods for studios and three beds. But you can see that ones and twos are increasing in price, not a whole lot. But again, like I said, prices are going up in two thousand and twenty-four. We'll see if that trend continues in twenty-five. Uh, this slide, again, I know I'm short on time, so I'm kind of whipping through it. This is gross rent is a percentage of income for the city of Snohomish's renters, and in blue, and the, and Snohomish County in orange. This is for two thousand and twenty-three, the American Community Survey. You can see that the city of Snohomish does not have as much severe cost burden as Snohomish County. However, it does have a higher rate of people cost burden to the tune of forty to fifty percent of their income, forty-nine point nine percent of their income per month. The federal definition of cost burden starts at thirty percent of your income going to rent every month as a household. That's where you will start to experience, or have to make difficult choices around how you spend your money, whether it's on housing, transportation, clothing, food, certainly healthcare and savings. Saving for the future, saving for that increasingly expensive home purchase. That is where you'll start to make those choices. So the city of Snohomish, again, stands in contrast to the county overall. Not without problems, but certainly is different than a lot of other cities in the county. One last thing that I would like to show you is the number of households in the city of Snohomish who rent, this is exclusively households who rent, who, as shown on screen right now, make one hundred thousand dollars or more. And these bars are the amount of cost burden. Gray is less than twenty percent, orange is twenty to twenty-five. Yellow is twenty-five to thirty percent. So nobody who rents in the city of Snohomish who makes more than a hundred thousand dollars is cost burden in two thousand and twenty-three. So that's three hundred and ninety households total who rent and earn over a hundred thousand. Let's go down the income scale to seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar households and fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar households. You can see that cost burden starts to show up in I forget, chartreuse, I think I got the color right, green and darker blue. And then we have households making below fifty thousand dollars a year. You can see that renting affordably is almost a thing of the past, except for a few households in the twenty to fifty thousand dollar range that rent affordably. What is going on there, I ask myself, as I was putting this presentation together? There are four hundred and eleven Snohomish renting households making less than fifty thousand dollars a year who are not cost burdened. How is, how have they pulled that off? What's the explanation? Part of it is, is that there's three hundred and, my explanation, rather, is three hundred and ninety-five units of assistance exist in the city of Snohomish today. Eighty-six of those units are Hasko Housing Choice vouchers, or Section Eight. Two hundred and seven other units of assistance, a few owned by the Housing Authority, a few owned by other organizations, and the hundred and two Snohomish Affordable Housing Group units. This to me is, is, I enjoy looking at smaller rental markets like Snohomish or Stanwood, where you can really see, in my opinion, the effect of housing assistance in that city. I really do believe that these households that are renting affordably in the city of Snohomish are doing so because of the presence of housing assistance. It's not because they had gumption, or they do have gumption, certainly, but that they found a deal, or they just figured it out, that nobody else has figured it out. They're just the lucky ones who got the assistance that is available in the city. And there are four hundred and sixty-one remaining who are cost burdened in that dark blue in the less than ten thousand and ten thousand to twenty thousand dollar range. So four hundred and eleven down, four hundred and sixty-one to go, if you want that. If you enjoy thinking about it that way. Conclusions, again, trying to wrap this up quickly. The city and the county prices are set to resume rising in two thousand and twenty-five. Twenty-three and twenty-four have been a little unusual. But I think that we are going to see things continue, or continue their upward trend, unfortunately. A question to you, the council, the mayor, the staff, the planning commission, I got that out of order, is how can Snohomish continue and revitalize its varied housing production? The city does have a uniquely rich history of variety across its history, and continuing that is something to be proud of. The impact and benefit of housing assistance is visible in the city. You are small enough, and, you know, I can really match things up well enough to show that it's worthwhile, that it is valuable, that these are valuable contributing members of the community, whether they are currently working or or retired, just part of the social fabric of the community. You know, we could really start to show that, show that benefit. Production county and citywide is on the decline. That's particular to the county where ownership housing, all types of ownership housing, we have never built fewer ownership units in Snohomish County until you get back to nineteen eighty-two. So we are in a pretty low spot countywide in terms of production. And the city is to a degree following that trend. The impacts of your comprehensive plan and House Bill eleven-ten, the middle housing bill, I know it doesn't apply to the city right now, but still countywide, it's all yet to be seen. It is worth keeping in mind that global, national, and state events will have a part to play in how successful we as the city, the region, the state are in responding to the housing crisis, you know, interest rates, labor, and so on. Oops, I left this conclusion slide originally was part of Mount Lake Terrace. This is a large, an issue that is larger than Mount Lake Terrace and the city of Snohomish alone, but you do definitely have a part to play. The city of Snohomish is small but mighty and unique. And I think, as I talk to the mayor, to Brook, and to others in the city, I really emphasize the value of the city as a case study for how to do it right. And I hope to support the city in continuing to do it right and seeing it succeed into the future. Thank you very much. I hope I didn't totally blow my ten-minute timeline. If I did, I'm sorry. Any questions? Well, that was easy.
Yeah.
I'm on. Okay. Hi, Chris. So okay to go now? Okay. Okay. As always, this is great and informative. I have three questions, so I guess we'll just do one at a time. Will that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay. So you had on one of your slides, options that are many. Could you just speak specific? Oh, it was me. Okay, sorry, just a little technical. Pardon me. Could you speak to specifically Snohomish, what options that are available or workable for us that are doable? That's question number one. Go ahead. Thank you.
I think in part, it depends on what you want to see happen. You know, if you want to build, I don't think this is true, skyscrapers, you know, ten-story, twenty-story concrete and steel buildings, that's one thing. Brook's toes are curling around, like, Chris, shut up, shut up. It depends on what you want to see. Ownership, apartments, something in between. The options are many. Part of it is your policies. Brook is working hard on those with the Pilchuck Districts and making the code straightforward and streamlined. And so let me put it this way, let me try to answer your question directly. If you tell Brook, go forth and make the code make sense to a builder, the big challenge that folks run into is, but what if the builder built something ugly? And so you get into this, into this place of being prescriptive in your land use and architectural and design standards. And that's a tough place to be. And so what is the solution is less, like, do tweak this one thing and more decide what you, you as a city want to see and trust that the building community will get you there. If there's one thing I would say as a general concept, support. I hesitate to say this because I don't want to be too controversial, but allow middle housing, allow duplexes and triplexes in more parts of the city. Allow that variety that really doesn't look out of place in the city, and in fact, exists already from times prior to our current land use codes and, and design standards, Euclidian zoning, and so on. Embracing that sort of thing and trusting that the private market will build it in a way that isn't ugly, I mean, is, is hard, but that's what I encourage you all to, where to put your heads, because after all, you can still paint your house pink. It can look really ugly. Go ahead, sorry.
That's great. You always have the best information. Okay, see, I'm doing the harder ones first and last one will hopefully be easy, because it's data-driven. But you touched on it, and I've been thinking about that. What are some of the challenges in the greater picture, maybe not specific to Snohomish, obviously, but maybe Snohomish County that prevent more building? I mean, this will probably be from a developer-builder point of view, or the kind of feedback you hear, that what are some of the barriers that might prevent us from getting there, or builders being reluctant to come in? Thank you.
The biggest thing is, interest rates are still at six point eight percent and change. That is going to slow things down. Obviously, not something the city can wave a magic wand. Nobody, as much as they want to, can wave a magic wand. Um, obviously not something the city can wave a magic wand. Nobody, as much as they want to, can wave a magic wand to make the Fed lower interest rates. Um. A trade war and tariff war with Canada, our soft lumber supplier is not going to help anything whatsoever. Um, those are two things way out of our control. Um, locally is that builders tend to specialize in specific cities and their zoning codes. And their zoning codes, development regulations, et cetera, et cetera. So if someone's a specialty, for example, specialist, so for example, in City of Bellevue. City of Bellevue is notorious for having a nightmarish swamp of a zoning and architectural design. Design standard, um Snohomish not the case, but still builders say, eh, I'm cozy in Lake Stevens, I'm gonna stay here because I get it. Like, I understand, I specialize in the city of Lake Stevens. And part of it is outreach to builders and saying, come here, build here, we want, we want you to do that. Um. So. In the middle, um. At the state and county level. Hmm. There is, as things do change, as the middle housing bill takes effect, you could see builders uh. Preferring the more urban built up areas. Um, as they start to figure out and get get on board with middle density housing. Uh, if they feel that they can build more or. Realize more revenue or return on their investment in urban areas, whether it's Seattle or Everett or Edmonds and Linwood. Um, you may see that and that if the city does not embrace things like middle density. Um, you may see builders say, well, you know, we we will learn Edmunds and leave Snohomish because I can make more money there. I'm not sure if that's a perfect answer. Um. I'll think more on it.
Yeah, thank you. Last question. And you don't, I'm not expecting you to answer it tonight, but it is data driven. We've had a lot of development up on, which is not a bad thing. Um, you know, apartments, multifamily, more um in some affordable housing from like, is it twentieth? North on Bickford at some point, would you be able to extrapolate that for us? Like, how many units have been built? And then. On top of that is how many more? People that's probably. Put in that area.
Uh, I will, I will work with Brooke to try to find an answer to that. I think that's a two part, two part response from her and I.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, just because looking at infrastructure and the strains it has on. You know, our roads and other things. So, okay, if you get back to me at some point, that's great. And Chris, you're always the best. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the questions.
Sorry about that, Chris. I had lost my microphone for a minute, so I couldn't respond to you before. Um, council, do you have any further questions for Chris before he has to log off tonight? Council President Merrill?
Um. No questions yet. That was pretty dense and pretty fast, so I'm gonna have to spend some time with it, so I'll be getting back to you on some questions. I assume we get this, uh, we will have this uh slideshow available to us.
Yep.
To study. Okay, Chris, thank you for coming. Uh, you'll hear from me.
My pleasure. Thank you, thank you so much. I did, I know it's a lot. I just tried to cram it all into ten minutes, so I know you got a busy night tonight.
Council member Neils.
And I'll be very quick. I. I wonder if we also overlay whatever we're, whatever you're thinking as we continue to work with you and I'm leading up to a question. About what the Growth Act says we need to have in the city of Snohomish as opposed to just grow, just building. You know, manage growth that has some middle density, middle uh missing middle. Is important, but then we still have the Growth Act and I want to be sensitive to. Where we build, how we build and what we build. Uh, so. Answering that question as it relates to meeting the density, I think. Population of ten thousand two hundred anticipated growth by twenty forty four, whatever year it is of just under thirteen thousand. So you know, we have some targets of how we want to get there and I just want to make sure we measure what we're doing with how we're getting there. But thank you.
Yep. Sounds good. Just let me know if I can help in any way. Um, a lot of that will be Brooke, go ask Chris questions and uh she knows how to, how to reach me.
Any further questions, council? Chris, I wanted to thank you and I wanted to um highlight that um. Chris was very um informative and instrumental for the uh development of the last comprehensive plan update. Um, so we really appreciate all that you put into it and I just wanted to let council know and anybody listening that the city does contribute um. Some to a very small amount for the Alliance for Housing Affordability, but Chris is also part of the Housing Authority of Snohomish County and so they do. They are our housing authority and they do so much to ensure that there is. Affordable housing within the city, they provide vouchers and that type of thing. So they're a very important organization and one of our community partners. So. Thank you, Chris, for all the, the um information you always provide for us and for being part of an organization that helps us meet the needs of our community.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for having me. You guys have a great meeting this evening.
Thank you, Chris. We'll talk soon. All right. We will also, we now have a uh Planning Commission annual report for the city council. And a review of the two thousand and twenty five work program. Um, I know Brooke Item is the staff liaison for the Planning Commission and we also have, is it Chair Lippincott here tonight? Oh, vice chair, okay.
Good evening. My name is Terry Lippincott. I currently am the vice chair of the Planning Commission and I'm here to give you our annual report. I'll try to make it short. Uh, probably shorter than Chris's, but I have less details and no slides. All right, so the city of Snohomish Planning Commission, we held nineteen meetings in two thousand and twenty four and that's unusual. Usually it's one meeting a month. However, we chose to meet twice a month because we had really heavy lifting to do with the comp plan. So we had a joint workshop with the city council in March covering our work program for the year. The Planning Commission held nine public hearings in two thousand and twenty four on the following topics. And of course, our big one was the Comprehensive Plan. So we had to update that. The project took a significant amount of time on the Planning Commission's work program for two thousand and twenty four. We met twice a month, as I said. Until the work was completed in September. Now I have an evening a month I don't know what to do with because that's all I did last year. Uh, three of the nine public hearings were held on the topic alone in March. The first Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing was held regarding parks. Climate, environment and utilities element. In August, the commission held its second Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing on the Housing Economic Development and Capital Facilities element. And in September, the third, excuse me, and final public hearing was held, this time on the complete two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and forty four. Comprehensive Plan and two thousand and twenty five zoning map. We spent uh probably uh the most amount of time talking about ADUs accessory dwelling units. We really felt that was um. Something we needed to pay close attention to considering the current housing market. And uh the recent legislation regarding ADUs and DDU's, that's a new acronym I learned. Detached. Accessory dwelling units. In June, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the new chapter fourteen dot one seven O SMC to change the way the city regulates ADUs. In response to state legislation, the project also affected several other sections of Title fourteen. Snohomish Municipal Code and was a result of many months of hard work and discussion and we really uh wrestled a lot with this, especially with the utility. So thank you, uh Nova Heaton for coming and educating us on that and all of Brooke's hard work with that. We also spent some time on permitted land uses, chapter fourteen dot twenty five, fourteen dot two oh seven, fourteen dot two one two. And in June, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider changes to the land use tables. As you can imagine, these were sparsely attended, but still very important. So we added new essential public facilities and special housing types as required by law. The design review, we spent a little bit of time on that, fourteen dot two three O. In November, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. To consider the design review authority outside the historic district. And that's always sort of an interesting one. When something gets built that people don't like. Then they want to come in and say, we should have design review everywhere. And then people say, no, that's, that's uh not constitutional. So we spent some time talking about that to streamline the permitting process and remove ambiguity for applicants in response to House Bill twelve ninety three. We also spent just a little bit of time on the regional transit authority facilities and that in November, we held a public hearing and added a new essential public. Facility to the land use table as required, and I believe that was our bus. Facility, yes. So that was not controversy, controversial at all. The multifamily density bonus, that was new and it's a creative effort to um address the need for more middle housing. So in November, we held a public hearing to consider a fifty percent density bonus for proposals that add new housing units. Within the building envelope of existing buildings located in zones that permit multifamily housing in response to House Bill ten forty two. Then we went to residential parking standards, not a terribly sexy topic, but important because people want to be able to fit their vehicles in. So also that was in November, we held a public hearing to consider amendments to the parking chapter. In response to Senate Bill sixty fifteen, increasing flexibility for residential development and redevelopment. We also participated in events throughout the year and discussed public input for the Comprehensive Plan. There was quite a robust outreach for um. The public in regards to the Comprehensive Plan. We'd also like to thank Council President Merrill and Council Member Coletta for showing up. And weighing in, especially in their areas of expertise, which uh happens to be transportation. So that was our year in a nutshell. I'm now going to turn it over to. Uh, Brooke Item, who's going to tell you about our work plan for this year, which is going to seem uh much lighter in comparison to last year. Thank you.
If only. So, um. This is the work program for two thousand and twenty five. We've already held two public hearings so far. One was on the Blackman's Lake Treatment and then the other was on the tree program. Um, so council will be seeing the tree program soon. Uh, currently, we're working on the Impact Fee Amendment Code and then we're going to move on to the Critical Areas Ordinance, which is required this year under GMA. Um, we will be discussing the Northlake Annexation and then uh some other relatively minor code cleanup associated with uh boundary line adjustments and signs. Uh, we'll be removing the northeast sewer area limitations after the new trunk line is built. And then we'll be working with the the EDAB, the Economic Development Advisory Board. Uh, later this summer on home based businesses and mobile food vendors. Um, the Pilchuck District regulations are, you'll notice it there here at the bottom, um with no uh nothing on the calendar. They're here in what we call the parking lot. Um, they're. Parking lotted on on the list because it's unlikely that we'll get to it this year. Um, with all of these other items scheduled, but um it will be tackled if something else drops off. Otherwise, it will be on the list for two thousand and twenty six. Uh, and this item has a lot of uh public engagement that needs to to go ahead of the Planning Commission's discussions. So that's, that's why it's just kind of hanging out, waiting. Um, but as you can see, there's a whole lot here on the the schedule. And critical areas is going to take a lot of time, so we have a lot of discussions. Um, prior to that adoption scheduled toward the end of the year. Um, right now, staff is is doing all the best available science um research and um. Uh, the preliminary um analysis before it gets to the Planning Commission. So. It's still a busy year, still a lot going on, uh but not quite as busy. They are still only meeting once a month, so that's, that's at least nice.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Lippincott and Director Item. Council, do you have questions? Well, approve of the work that's going on, right? Yes. Thank you to the Planning Commission for all the hard work that went into the Comprehensive Plan and also Director Item for that. Um, yes, we've got lots of plans to work on now. All right, great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to our public comment portion of the meeting. Um, this is a uh. Heads up to the people who are attending online to use your Zoom controls or star nine if you're on the phone to raise your hand. We'll go ahead and go to our in person attendees first for public comment. Um, you can go ahead and step up to the podium if you have comment tonight. You'll have three minutes. For any item that are, for any matter that is not listed as a public hearing or action item on the agenda, and since we don't have any public hearings or action items, it's. Kind of free rein for you. So go as long as it's under legislative jurisdiction of the city council. So please step up if you would like to comment. Go ahead. Make sure that your microphone is turned on like this. And then state your name, relationship to the city, and you'll have three minutes. I think we're there.
Hi, um, I am Masterson. I live in the city of Snohomish. And I just want to address an issue that came up with the last um, at the last meeting. I would like to thank the council for their explanation of the status of. Of the city of Snohomish as not being a sanctuary city and the clarification. That there are no plans to change that in the future. This was very clear statement. With regards to previous citizens' comments on this issue, it is certainly within our rights to express one's concerns and fears regarding the relationship. Between local crime and undocumented peoples. The available statistics found on the county site does not support this. Violent crime in Snohomish County currently. At ninety nine incidents this year is less than state national averages. Nonviolent or property crimes at four hundred and eighty two cases is about average. None of the crimes to this date in two thousand and twenty five is associated with any undocumented person. This does not mean it is impossible, but currently not statistically probable. Statistics nationwide indicate that crime rate in the population of undocumented people is much lower. It is not zero, but undocumented status does not correlate to a higher violent crime rate in this population. To isolate one national case as as terrible as the crime was. And to use it to define a whole population is both unfair and unjust. But serves only to drive a wedge of fear and hatred between people and to make the possibility of good governance extremely difficult. Purpose of my testimony is not to either favor nor decry any single point of view. But to remind us that we live in a, in a shared diverse community. Those that claim that we are a conservative community must also remember that conservative means. To take an educated, measured and thoughtful approach to public policy and should never be dictated by special interest or hysteria. If one were to cite being a Christian community, then it behooves us to remember that what we do to the least of our brethren we do to Jesus. That is never forget that our community is diverse, that our policies must encompass that diversity and in order to create a strong and a safe community for all. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to provide comment tonight? Go ahead and step up to the podium, state your name and relationship to the city and you will have.
Good evening, council and mayor Redmond. Um, this is, I'm Pietra Gable from Everett. And I'm here to con- comment on this as well. Um, just first of all, Mayor Redmond, you had mentioned last meeting that there will be no changes. And implied that Snohomish is not seeking to become a sanctuary city. Is that correct? Oh, you can't comment, I forgot. Yes. Yet your February fourth meeting minutes and the Tribune clearly state that this proposed resolution, they state this resolution. Um, you refuse to explain your comments when. Asked last meeting and the last two sets of council meeting minutes are not, still not published, so I can't. Determine whether this is actually a fact, see anything in writing, whether you're not going to become or pursue becoming a sanctuary city. I'd be happy to see it when it is published. And you've not replied to my email inquiry from two weeks ago. After public comments, would you please address your comments from the last council meeting and the council's intention? So I'm going to treat this as though this is still going to pursue because they have nothing in writing to verify that it's not. Um, despite the high cost of living for your constituents, you are considering using their tax dollars to defy federal law. And protect illegal, illegal immigrants from federal immigration authorities. These people intentionally and knowingly invaded our borders without legal permission or documentation. Defying our immigration onboarding process. Violating Title eight code thirteen twenty five is not only a civil violation, it's recognized by our administration as a federal crime. That makes these non-citizens and kind and hardworking as they are, as many of them are criminals. Are you prepared to face federal felony charges for concealing illegal immigrants if you go through with this sanctuary? Policy and impeding federal law enforcement officers. Federal statute Title eight code thirteen twenty four states it's a felony. To knowingly harbor and conceal an illegal alien from immigration authorities. It's also a felony to impede a federal law enforcement officer. Failure to report a suspected undocumented immigrant is impeding a federal officer. According to Executive Order thirteen seven sixty eight. Sanctuary cities which refuse to comply with the immigration enforcement's measures would quote not be eligible to receive federal grants. The city's Finance Director and Treasurer, Alicia Hendren, confirms Snohomish is receiving nearly six point five million dollars. In federal funding toward the city's crucial north sewer trunk line project. The civic campus utility infrastructure project and a quarter grant for intersection improvements this year. Are you really willing to sacrifice these services in your battle to put illegal immigrants above your own constituents? As a sanctuary city, Snohomish may face critical legal liability challenges for incidents involving undocumented immigrants. Creating public safety risk and exposing the city to potential lawsuits. Thank you.
Would, would anyone else like to comment tonight? Go ahead and step up to the podium and state your name in relationship to the city and you'll have three minutes.
car, and that thief goes to court? Does that court case pull the date out of the system beyond 30 days? There's a lot of confusion over not having a very clear plan. And the biggest, the concern I have, as a small city, there are lawsuits now, especially not just with the company Flock. There are lawsuits around the country, probably about 20 of them, that are federal lawsuits dealing with these surveillance issues. That's a small city. I don't believe we can afford to get involved with those. One of the things, these systems are not license-tag readers. They are systems, they track people across the city. One of the key examples is a healthcare worker who goes from house to house to house. His or her clients have an expectation of privacy. That person is not tracked. These systems are designed to track people. Also, there are sources, a couple of concerns about, I've heard of concerns about immigrants and people in the city. This is also a tool used by ICE to track illegal and proposed illegal immigrants in systems. And also, I know there's a concern among some people in this council, rightfully so, about the multi-billionaires that are taking over our information systems. So this Flock, one of the leading investors in this Flock system is a company called Andreessen Horowitz. They're a $45 billion investment firm, and they're an investor in Flock.
All right, if anyone would like, else would like to comment, please go ahead and step up, state your name and relationship to the city, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Erica Minahan, and I'm a resident of Snohomish. And I'm also addressing the sanctuary city. I would like some clarification as well, and I'm okay to get an opportunity to have any kind of dialogue about that. I just want to say that I don't consider myself a politician. I'm not an activist. I'm here because I love Snohomish. It's a beautiful suburban town. It's predominantly a blue-collar town. Like I said last time, established by hard-working, legal citizens. And we wanted to keep it that way. We want to keep it a beautiful suburban town. The last city council meeting, somebody brought up the point that illegal immigrants are simply people who are in search of a better life for themselves, no different than our forefathers, and that they just simply walked across the border seeking a better life for themselves. And I'd like to speak to that comment. The fact is that all of the United States, over the last few years under the previous administration, experienced a massive, unprecedented intrusion of countless dangerous aliens who posed grave threats to the U.S. citizens. Too many of our towns and cities have been overrun by foreign terrorist organizations invading the United States. They were flown in, bussed in, and invited in to the United States, and they were protected by some sort of pseudo-parole system. The truth is, the previous administration authorized a secretive immigration air and land entry program that included allowing individuals into the U.S. from specifically-known cartel groups from Cuba, Venezuela, Guatemala, El Salvador, Haiti, and Nicaragua. While the previous administration has at times mentioned its air and land entry program, the details of the program where the immigrants were dumped remains secret due to security concerns. However, I recently read a report that stated that over 320,000 inadmissible immigrants were let into 43 unidentified cities. Surely, some that entered are probably people who want a better themselves and could possibly contribute to society. However, many of the individuals likely just wanted to get on the gravy train of all things free the United States was openly offering. So to clarify, yes, most of us are U.S. citizens because our forefathers immigrated to the U.S. But the distinction here is that our forefathers were legal immigrants. They were vetted, and they, if they were criminals, seeking asylum, or if they brought disease, they were turned away. They didn't come here simply to take advantage, or far worse, come with intent to harm our society, our freedoms, and our children. There's a huge distinction between our forefathers and the current national immigration epidemic. So tonight, I ask respectfully for you, our public servants, to focus on the work of protecting the legal citizens of Snohomish, to use wisely our taxpayer dollars, and to continue building a legacy that improves the lives of all Snohomish residents. Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to comment tonight?
Hi, speaking now as a private citizen, Terry Lippincott, 605 Avenue A. I just read a book about the War of 1812, and the British would have certainly called all of the Americans at the time criminals. They were actually taking sailors off of American ships and conscripting them, because they said that it was, they were continuing to be British citizens. So I think we can argue historical facts and data all night long. What I don't understand is why, I don't know how much more clear Mayor Redmond can be. I've spoken to several city council members about this. We are not considering becoming a sanctuary city. We are following the laws of Washington State and federal laws. I don't know what the hoopla is or the scare tactics that are being used to make everyone think that we're opening our city and going out and bringing in people that don't belong here. I don't understand that. I don't understand these fear that I'm hearing from people behind me. It makes me sad, and I want them to understand that we're not considering it. And I don't know how much more clear Mayor Redmond can be. So that, that's a little upsetting. I also would appreciate it if during council comments, we could speak to this surveillance camera issue. As I understood it, it was for parks, to try to mitigate vandalism in parks. And to that degree, that doesn't bother me at all. I'd like to see some increased security in our parks due to the cost of the vandal. So that's it. Thanks.
Would anyone else, would anyone else like to comment tonight? Go ahead and step up to the podium. Make sure the microphone's on. State your name and relationship to the city, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, seeing them, we'll go ahead and go to our remote attendees. Again, it's use your Zoom controls or *9 if you're on the phone to raise your hand. The system will call you and ask you to unmute yourself. When you do that, please state your name and relationship to the city.
0879.
Good evening. Can you hear me now? This is Morgan Davis, Snohomish.
Yes, we can hear you.
I like to, you can hear me now? Good. I'd like to comment on several things. First, the previous two speakers, Mr. Lewis and Ms. Lippincott, on surveillance cameras, the issue of that. She said, oh, it's, we're going to spend this money, it's only needed for parks, surveillance. Well, speaking of parks, you're going to talk about Homestead Park tonight on Discussion Item 6A, and you're, you're going to demolish that beautiful $800,000 home. Paul Kafansky at the last Parks Board meeting says, I know it's bad economics to tear down an $800,000 building, but I don't want it there. And if you leave it there, as the previous administration, Denise Johns, and even Ann Stanton, they had that Parks, that Homestead House worth $800,000. They even, there was a council meeting in October 2015. Dean Ranald wanted to demolish it then, and the council voted no. Let's, let's save it. Let's put $60,000 in new roof. It was just remodeled in the 1990s. It's a beautiful house. And at that time, Consulman Kafansky says, oh, yeah, be a, be a good AIR, Artisan Residence Home, and, and same with Consulwoman Guzak. And then she said, okay, let's keep it as a caretaker house. Well, that's why they got a renter in there, to prevent vandalism. So it's too reckless spending the city's talking about. An unnecessary totalitarian state surveillance program is unneeded for the old town of Snohomish. There's no big crime rate. And then there's the destroying a beautiful existing building for no reason, just because they don't like it anymore. No, they want to reverse the previous administration. No, that, that Homestead House was designed, in fact, I emailed the council members. The original design, master plan, said it's supposed to be, the house is supposed to be a park department office for programs, community center, restrooms, two and a half baths in there. And, no, this is an example of reckless wasteful spending, just like your civic campus. That should, that campus should be in two phases. First, put Public Works there, yes, the Public Works shop site and the police station, and then Phase Two later on at City Hall. You gotta, you gotta share the pain and you see upcoming recession. We can't afford $73 million for, to let the city hall, its inability to 4,000 square feet, go to 40,000 square feet 10 times? Are you going to hire 10 times your workforce in the next couple of years? No, it doesn't make sense. It's reckless spending.
That was three minutes. All right, last call for our remote attendees. Use your Zoom control to raise your hand or *9 if you're on the phone. Okay, seeing them, we'll go ahead and close public comments and move on to approving the agenda contents in order. Counsel, there is a proposed motion sheet in front of you. If anyone would like to approve the agenda contents in order. Counselmember Guzak.
I, I move to approve the agenda contents and order as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Guzak and seconded by Niels. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent items. We have four items on the consent agenda tonight. Counsel, would you like to move to approve the consent agenda?
I move to adopt all consent items, A through D. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Merrill and seconded by Councilmember Niels. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to discussion items. The first item tonight, 6A, is the Homestead Park Master Plan Update. We have Planning Director Nova Heaton here, Program Manager, is that right? Is that the right title for you?
Yeah, it's good enough yet.
Brendan Collins, here to present on this tonight. So are you taking it away, Brendan?
Yeah, well, take it, take it away. Thank you very much, Mayor Redmond.
And, okay. Yeah, no rush.
Yes, we'd like to talk to you a little bit tonight about Homestead Park and the master plan and just how things have been going. We haven't come to council yet with this, so just looking to get it on your radar, on where we're at. In front of you now, we see a picture of the Manmade Island in the center of the park. So we'll move on to the next slide. Just a little background information. The Homestead Park property located at 2,000 Lugwood Rogue was purchased with park impact fee dollars in June of 2013. The intent, the intent of this was to increase the park's level of service on the west side of SR9, as most of the parks are currently on the east side of town. In October of 2022, the city applied for planning and recreational access, the PRA grant offered by the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, also known as the RCO. Next, the city was not awarded the grant in the initial rounds of funding. However, the city became eligible and was awarded in later rounds. In August of 2024, the RCO awarded the city the PRA grant for the Homestead Park project in the amount of $147,324 to complete the master planning and Phase One design. Lastly, an RFQ was advertised for Professional Landscape Architects Services, and GGLO LLC was the selected landscape architect. We'll go to the next slide. Moving on to community engagement. So how have we been interacting with the public and people on this so far? Well, let's start with some past dates. First, we'll go to the Park and Forestry Board Prose Plan Update. This was done in the summer of 2024. Touched on a lot of the parks, including Homestead Park. Next, we had some farmers' market events, actually. On September 19th and 26th, we had a booth, just talking to people at the farmers' market. Next, there was an Avril Field event, where we talked some different parks and some things that were going on in the city. After that, we did the Park and Forestry Board on October 23rd. Got this on their radar on what was happening, and the PRA grant, I believe, was first mentioned to them at this point as well. Next, we had the city council meeting in December 3rd. This is when we awarded GGLO as a landscape architect on the project, and just gave a brief update on what the status of this was. Next, we had our Park and Forestry Board meeting in January. Just gave, it was kind of preliminary at this point, just giving a status on where we're at and what direction we should be going. Next, we had our public online survey, and the team has really been thinking very highly of how these online surveys have gone. This survey in particular was a really good turnout. So we're really happy with not only the amount of people we're reaching with us, but kind of the diversity on this, too. We're getting all age groups, all people, all, a great diverse kind of feedback on this. So the public online surveys have been very successful. We're really happy with that. And I'll go into this one a little more on some later slides. Next, we've got the Park and Forestry Board meeting in February 26th. I'm pretty much going to every Park and Forestry Board at this point, so we're going to keep going down that list, and it gets a little bit further every time. So, yeah, we're getting, we're moving right along. Next, there is the Homestead Park Community Event. We did a little event here at the Cause &amp; Weaver, and this was kind of just from a flyer we'd sent out to some of the neighbors and the locals in the area, and just kind of getting some in-particular feedback on, really, the residents who have this thing in their backyard. Really wanted to get a little extra from them on what they were thinking, how they were feeling, what they were concerned with. And I think that was actually a very successful event. Really happy, loved working with the planning department there. Those guys are great. We got some great feedback, and we got some new things on our radar. I mean, something that really, I came out of that with a few really new ideas and different perspectives and, and things to focus on. So I was really happy for their help there and, and really happy at just the turnout and how that went across the boards. Next, I will move on to future dates and upcoming things that we are, we are planning, one of which being tonight's council meeting. Just giving you guys an update, kind of telling you where we're at, giving you a feel for, for what is happening so far. Haven't had a chance to talk to you as a group yet, so get you some background information on where we are. Also mention that from some of our park board meetings, we have had some different ideas floating around for what to do with the existing barn area. So we've talked to our Park and Forestry Board. I'm going back to them with some options that they've background information on this. Again, we're, we're really liking how the, the online surveys are going. So that is posted on our, our city website, our page for Homestead So this is, and actually, these are like, you know, the meeting tonight, the survey closes tomorrow, and then on Thursday, we have the project open house. So this is a really big Homestead Park week for me. So on the 20th, we got, we'll have a booth set out for everyone to check out. So I'll have some graphics and some background, and you'll have a, you know, you or the public or anyone who'd like has a chance to talk to me 101 at that open house about, about where we're at with Homestead Park so far. guys are great. We got some great feedback, and we got some new things on our radar. I mean, something that really, I came out of that with a few really new ideas and different perspectives and and things to focus on. So I was really happy for their help there and and really happy at just the turnout and how that went across the boards. Next, I will move on to future dates and upcoming things that we are we are planning, one of which being tonight's council meeting. Just giving you guys an update, kind of telling you where we're at, giving you a feel for for what is happening so far. Haven't had a chance to talk to you as a group yet, so get you some background information on where we are. Also mention that from some of our park board meetings, we have had some different ideas floating around for what to do with the existing barn area. So we've talked to our Park and Forestry Board. I'm going back to them with some options that they've background information on this. Again, we're really liking how the the online surveys are going. So that is posted on our our city website, our page for Homestead Park. So this is, and actually, these are like, you know, the meeting tonight, the survey closes tomorrow, and then on Thursday, we have the project open house. So this is a really big Homestead Park week for me. So on the twentieth, we got, we'll have a booth set out for everyone to check out. So I'll have some graphics and some background, and you have a, you know, you or the public or anyone who'd like has a chance to talk to me one-on-one at that open house about about where we're at with Homestead Park so far. Next, we've got Parks and Forestry Board. This is an important one. On March twenty-sixth, we're going to be going back to the Parks and Forestry Board, and we think we are at a point where we are going to have approval from the Park and Forestry Board based on the data that we collected from the last meeting. We feel that we are very close. So if we if we do get over the finish line with them, like we're hoping to at March twenty-sixth, then on April fifteenth, we'll be coming back here to council with that final master plan to be adopted. All right, next slide. So just circling back a little bit, this was our first survey that went out to the public. Again, we had four hundred and sixty respondents on this. We were super thrilled about that. A few of the questions that were on here were, are you a city of Snohomish What age range would you like the playground to be? How do you feel about the elements of the draft site plan? And what ways would you use this park? Just to name a few on this. So I think we're good. Thank you. So we'll go, next slide. So here's kind of an overview of what we are big picture planning for as far as a timeline. In January 2025, we were on these initial phases, just kind of laying out what we were doing, who's who, who's what. GGLO kind of introduced our team to a lot of their team. They have a few subconsultants on this project. KPFF has been great to work with. They're the civil guy. SSF has been wonderful. They did the barn assessment. They're a structural contractor. Transpo for the parking lot assessment and things like this. We've worked with them on a few jobs. It's good to see them on the team as well. So that, in January, we had that kind of initial layout. Then we kind of rolled right into the master planning design phase, and that is where we currently are right now. So right now, it's it's a lot of back and forth with the Park and Forestry Board, a lot of back and forth with the public, just collecting data from these surveys. And every iteration we have, we just get a little bit further. So we are hopefully coming to the end of that master plan design, which is outlined in red up on the screen. And then, once we have an approved master plan design, we can roll into the Phase One documentation, where we basically make construction drawings for the Phase One area. This would be very comparable to what we did on Avril Field. We had a master plan of the whole thing, the big picture. And then for that Phase One, that that bite-sized chunk, we focused in on one area and made construction drawings for it. So similar similar concept here. Go, next slide. So this was actually shown at the February Park and Forestry Board meeting. There are going to be some different variations, but at this point, we'd just like to show some of these to kind of help give a big picture overall of where we're at. In particular, there's something I'd like to talk about on here, actually, on the next slide, is the area, and I'm just going to use my little pointer here, this guy right here. So up here, the Park and Forestry Board has actually recommended that we explore some different options on the barn area. We had gone to the Park and Forestry Board last month with a approximate budgetary cost of what it would take to get that barn up to snuff and up to what we need it for for public use. And the overall feeling we were getting from the Park and Forestry Board was that the cost-to-benefit ratio wasn't really quite there. There was not a lot of enthusiasm for it. It seemed very pricey for what we were getting. So we took that into consideration. We also put out a survey, which will be closing tomorrow. So far, the results from the survey are kind of lining up with what the park board were saying as well. So the site plan will, there will be some subtle differences, but there might be some kind of significant differences in this barn area on the next version that I'm going to be showing you guys in April. So we'll go to the next slide. So these are kind of fun. These are just some vignettes of what the site can be. This should help kind of spur the imagination along and and just get people excited or help visualize what this part could look like once it's constructed. Something I really like about these vignettes, too, is they give you, and I'm just going to use a laser pointer again, if you'd like, you get kind of a key in the bottom, and then the arrows go out. So they give you about where you are on the site and about the direction you're looking. It kind of helps orient you when you're on the site. So this particular slide is the view looking west towards the pond loop trail. And then we'll go to the next Now, this one is the view looking east approaching the play area and parking lot. Then we'll go to that next slide. Now, this is the view looking south from the pond walking loop. And then this one is the view looking southwest from primary parking area into the playground. And then I believe this is the last one, where you're in the southeast corner, an aerial view looking north. And it just kind of gives you a good overall version of the site and what this can be and what we're hoping for. So again, I'm totally planning to get to come back to you guys in, hopefully, on April fifteenth, and we'll be doing another presentation and another rundown of where we're at and where we're landing. And hopefully, we have a very dialed-in version to you by then. But in the meantime, are there any questions that you have for us on the job? Yes, Judith? Or Councilmember Clutter?
I know, you're fine. Oh, man, rain block. How much is the grant that we're getting?
So the PRA grant we're getting from the RCO is one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and three hundred, one hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
And there's a deadline of that in June?
That is correct. So as the grant stands today, the the termination date is June thirtieth, 2025. The date it started was August first, 2024.
I remember, I mean, there was, because I've talked to a couple of people about this and kind of did a little bit of digging. So I remember there's a lot of chatter, and it's not like a criticism. I'm just trying to figure it out. Like, that looks really good. I'm digging what you got so far, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But there was something about, a lot of chatter about a disc golf course. Is that just kind of gone further down the priority? I'm not, I'm not, when I ask this, it's not advocating or against. I'm just kind of like, oh, this looks different from what I originally thought. So, thank you.
Can you go back to the slides? So the disc golf is still shown on this plan. When this, this has been, I want to echo what Brendan said about it being an iterative process. We've worked very hard. So when we first laid this park out, it was based on that original outreach we did with the comprehensive plan and the Parks Pros Plan. We pulled some of the top desired items off of those outreach surveys, and one of them was a disc golf. The reason we're putting disc golf here is because it works really well with the site. It saves the trees. It protects the wetlands. So we have a lot of, we had a lot of things we had to look at when we were deciding what we put where. So when you're looking at that picture there, you can see the parking lot to the right. You can see the playground right in the middle, and then the pond to the left. As you would go off to the left off that picture, the first thing you're going to run into is our wildflower fields. And then you're going to have loop trails, and inside all those trees is where that that disc golf is. It does not remove the trees. We save the trees. In fact, the disc golfers kind of like working around the trees. So.
Thank you. This is really great. So on top of that, you've told me how much we get. So I guess it depends on how ambitious we, we, meaning the city, gets, but the cost of preliminary.
Let me, let me also talk about the the date. The date is actually for us to finish the master plan. That's what that drop-dead date is about. So we have milestones that we said we would meet, and it is the master plan. It's not the plans and construction for the Phase One. However, they're still paying for that. The money, the grant money is still going towards that, but we had milestones. We have to meet by the certain dates, and that's what we're doing by the the June date.
So if you don't meet all the criteria, do you lose all that money from the RCO or part of it? Or I'm just curious how the process works, because I'm trying to walk my way through this. Thank you.
They would probably pay us for what we had done up to that point. But the biggest thing to remember when working for grants is we always want to apply for them again. We always want to do it again. And the worst thing we can do is not fulfill our obligations. And so we would get paid for the work that was done up to that point, even though we didn't get all of the, or maybe they would do a percentage based on which which of those targets we did meet. But we, when we go again to apply, it would affect our rating when we went to apply in the future for additional funds.
I don't know what, a rating? Like, is that something the state? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand it.
That's okay. When we apply for a grant, they literally rank us on different portions of our application, and one of those is on our past performance with the.
Councilmember Burke? Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm curious as to what sort of the unique feedback you got during the outreach at the Cause Weaver event that didn't show up in other outreach events.
I'll be happy to to start, and then if I miss anything, Brendan can hit it. But the number one, the biggest one, was ADA accessibility, not in the park, but to the park. Yeah, and traffic on the road and the speeds on the road. So one of the things we're looking at doing is adding the a portion of the sidewalk extension to the master plan so it shows up on there. That may be built by a developer. It might be built by the city. It depends on timing. Brooke has actually been working to try to get some of that done through a development project. And in addition, we are putting a crosswalk in that wasn't on the original master plan, and we're doing it with bull bouts and what you would call a speed hump or a speed table in order to help do some traffic calming on that road, because that road really does need a bit of traffic calming to slow the speeds down. The last was just the neighbors that were impacted adjacent to the park and their desires.
Okay. Missed anything?
Oh, the R R F B?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then also an R R F B at that crossing as well, which is that rapid, repeating, flashing beacon.
That's activated by pedestrians?
Yep.
And a coffee cart.
And actually, I guess, just one more part to do. Absolutely everything she mentioned, safety being the biggest thing, we kind of took away from cause on on multiple levels, but also as an action item that happened after that. When our next meeting with GGLO, we actually asked that Transpo get a little involved on this, and they put out some traffic counters to kind of see what was happening on Ludwig Road. And the data that we collected from the traffic counters basically completely confirmed what the people on cause were saying. The average speed is significantly higher than the speed limit. The counts for a country road are shocking. I mean, they've got like ten thousand cars or something that went down it in a few weeks or something crazy like that. It was significantly higher and significantly faster, the data, than than what we were actually expecting for a country road. So really, really glad that, and I think planning really spearheaded that one. Really glad they led the charge on that one, and I got to be there with them for that, because we got some valuable info out of that.
My other questions are related to disc golf again. And we have a disc golf set up at Ferguson Park. Are we seeing that the use of that park is not meeting the demand? Is or are folks, are folks aware that there's that amenity there?
Yeah, so the the disc golf at Ferguson is really a very small course. And so when you talk to the disc golf community, they would sort of describe it as sort of a, almost like a, a driving green, a driving, yeah, putting green or something like that. It's really just about those short, those short shots and learning to get it in the basket and things like that. It's not really what you would consider a full disc golf course.
So looking, I dove into some of the minutes from the Parks and Forestry Board and the that has the the tables on the elements of preferred element of, of potential things. And disc golf is on there. I'm seeing that there is both a high rate of liking it and a higher rate of not liking it compared to the other topics. So if you combine those between folks that really don't like something and don't like it versus like it, it it seems to be having more of a polarizing opinion than the other elements proposed, like bathrooms or or view corridors and stuff. That one seems to be, you know, the community has some strong feelings about it one way or the other. It's not enunciates, but it's in the, it's in the link to them.
Right, right. If you if you could scroll down to the next item is, okay. Or actually, could we go back in the slides, a few slides to the data table? Keep going, keep going. Right there, right there. That's the one you're looking at. So we actually had the disc golf polling in one of the higher brackets. And you're, so you're looking at the table that's on the bottom left right here.
Yeah, on the left. I'm looking at the aggregate of the two lighter colors, which you don't like and really don't like, versus the other ones, the other topic.
The two, the the green and the bluish colors are like, are still variations of like. So dark green is love it, light green is like it. So the disc golf did poll higher on this question, but I, and I'm having a little trouble reading it. I think it's this one. But when asked on this question, what ways would you see the, what ways would you use the park? Sorry, Karen. That, the disc golf actually polled very high. This is just data pulled from our online survey, too. When we were doing the pros plan, and I believe a few of the other plans, it was polling pretty solidly, too.
Yeah.
It's not the top item, but it tends.
It was number four.
Survey very well.
When we did the Parks Pros Plan, disc golf was number four.
So I'm also curious if in the data collected for the surveys, if we were counting zip codes of the respondents, because I'm curious if how much, there is a significant response rate of non-residents to residents.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I can't answer that right now.
Yeah, I don't think we did zip codes. We just asked if they were.
If they're a resident or not.
Yeah.
I do believe we can poll and see whether or not the people outside the city like disc golf versus inside the city. I'm pretty sure we can pull that, but I haven't looked at it.
I think that's valuable information, because this is a community park. It's not necessarily a regional park, and and I feel it's important to be serving, you know, the greater interests of the residents. And if that matches up, then that's great. We're being responsive. But if it's, if it's not, I think it merits a conversation.
I'm looking at Brooke real quick. This is a regional park, right? We, we've listed this in plan as a regional park.
Oh, that does change the flavor.
And, yeah, again, we, we started with disc golf because it was number four on the list. And all the other things above that, we were already hitting somewhere else. We also didn't, you know, we, we are providing all those other things. We're providing bathrooms. We're providing view corridor. The only thing on this list that we decided not to provide was actually the the gardens, because they just, they they ended up pretty low on the the usefulness question. And because that was on the Parks Pros Plan, we are looking at their locations to do community gardens. So we're really, this is a, it's a holistic view of the city and its park system, and we're really trying to make sure we're hitting every part. If we don't put the disc golf here, it really doesn't have another place that that makes a lot of sense. If we don't put the disc golf here, there's really not a lot of other things we can do and still save the trees in that area. We already are using it for the walkways, because we do have the walkways looping all the way around the disc golf course.
Unless it is unprogrammed open space, and there is a value to unprogrammed open space for habitat and ecological diversity. So I don't want us to go down the road of only valuing, valuing park space for intense human use. I think that's a key component of the conversation, that, you know, parks are a lot of things to a lot of people, but we also have, you know, responsibilities beyond just recreation.
And about twenty-five percent of this park is wetland.
Yes.
Protected. So we are, again, protecting that as well.
We are protecting that, but there, there's a lot of conversation, and it's not just restricted to park development, but there's no net loss, there's neutral ecological loss or gain. And then there's, there's net benefit of ecological functions. And I think that this is an opportunity to be really thinking of how we can do better and not just meet the standard, the bare minimum.
And I would just like to let you know that I went to that last meeting at Cause on Weaver and spoke to a city resident who was very much in favor. and spoke to a city resident who was very much in favor of the disc golf course. So just, and he said that other people in the city that are his friends would utilize this for the disc golf. Active recreation, so.
That's great, that's good to know.
I think I saw Councilmember Guzak had a question and then I believe Council President Merrill.
Right. Could you go back to the overview of the, the park? And I know this is just preliminary here, but I want to see. So is that, um, near the parking lot, there's a playground, but is that a little tennis court or a basketball?
Oh, you know what? That gets everybody. That is actually a swing set. And they totally look like, they look like a sports court from above. But it's just the footprint of the swing sets. They have to have a large footprint.
Yeah, we, we mark out the swing zones and the buffer zones where you can't put other equipment. And it completely made it look like a pickleball court.
It does look like a pickleball court, which people love pickleball, yes.
This is true.
So that's more or less the loc, well, actually, the, the issue around the house, it seems, has been decided. Is the house is going to come down?
That is correct. After the last Parks Board meeting, there was clear unanimous decision that one, the house isn't really what the park is made for. It wasn't what the park was purchased for. The city does not want to be in the business of renting. And the cost to, to maintenance ratio isn't great. And they made the decision, there is no historical value of the home. They made the decision to go ahead and, and use the park for the park features. That was, that was unanimous.
So the barn is kind of the only structure there that is still a question mark.
And I will say, the park, the Parks Board again, was fairly supportive of removing the barn after seeing the cost. And then we've come up with three different options that we'll talk to them about at the next Parks Board meeting of what we could do in that space instead, that they kind of directed us towards.
A sort of covered area or something like that?
There's three different items. One would actually be more of an open grass area. One would be a covered, a large covered area. And another would be more of like smaller covered areas for picniki type of things.
And also a stage on that.
Oh, right, the stage, that's right.
Okay, that's good. So all that, you know, in, in conversation. Okay, good, thanks.
And, and I feel like I had one more comment, but now I can't remember.
In regards to the house? Because we, we had explored some other options on, so our cultural resources report had ruled the house of not historical value on all four categories that they normally rank historical value for. So I think the only other thing we had is we did do an assessment on what it would take to remodel the house as it was originally built in 1907. But, but that again, that was just piggybacking off, off what Nova said where that was just part of the conversation on whether we should keep the house or not that we've had with the park board over the last few meetings with them.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Most of the questions that I've had, people have been addressing, I did, I did have one comment to say on disc golf. And that is I find the one in Ferguson Park to be very challenging. So I'm a little disappointed to find out, stayed in my skill. Second point I wanted to make is, is we've heard the, the number $800,000 house thrown around quite frequently. They certainly, the assessor's office does not put that kind of a value on it. It's a $323,000, it might cost two, might cost $800,000 as a new build for a 2100 square foot house. But when I see the assessor putting a $300,000 price on it, it tells me that there's a lot of work that needs to be done on it. And I was glad that Councilmember Guzak brought up the subject of the house because that has been probably the question that I've heard the most on this, is what we would do with that. And so I think when we get to the final assessment on that, we will have to talk about that in our final meeting and come back through with all the things that have been said on it in order to remove that because it's more attractive from the road than the barn is, I can tell you. The barn is, is a pretty sad structure, so I can understand not doing anything with that. Other than that, I'm all for open space. I leverage really off of what Councilmember Burke was saying is I really like the idea of unstructured usage. Other than that, I, I look forward to the final, final result and what, what you have to recommend. Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing, just quickly about the timing of this. I want to remind everybody, it's a master plan. I think people are getting really excited about it, which I absolutely love. But this is paid for by development with our park impact fees and will be built as we get those fees. So it's not going to happen right away and we need to keep that in mind. The city will continue to rent that home, hopefully to the, the current renters, they've been excellent renters, until, until the time is when we're actually doing phase one.
Councilmember Burke?
I'm sorry, I have a budget question relative to the, the rental income. And I, I don't remember if we've talked about it before, I think we have. But that rental income, does that, where does that income go? Does that go into the general fund? Or is that because it is a park property and it's being generated by park, you know, funds that were?
I'll have to double check with our finance director and get back to council on that. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Flynn?
Pardon my not knowing, but where's, where's the house located on this map?
So the, the house, the existing residence is actually located where the parking lot is. So it's roughly right in this area right here.
There's some great, there's some great fruit trees on this property. That would be great to see retained. You know, if we're not going to do community gardens, it is still an orchard or there's a remnant.
Okay. Yeah, that actually was one of the things that came up on cause on Weaver. They wanted community gardens, which we had decided this wasn't the right place for. However, they also mentioned the fruit trees. And we will be attempting to retain as many of the fruit trees as we can and probably plant some new ones.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. It seems like tree retention and if anything, adding trees has been a theme from, with the Park and Forestry Board in particular, from the beginning.
Oh, and I wanted to point out that it's not a, it's actually, it's not, it's on purpose that the parking lot is where the building is, not because our goal was to take the building down, but for, that's the safest spot for people to enter and exit on that road, which is why the driveway is there. So that is why we, we located that parking lot there.
And actually, as a side benefit to that section of the site, that is already relatively level and requires a lot less grading. So that will be a lot less cost when this project goes to construction.
All right, any further questions, council?
All right, thank you Brennan very much for giving us the whole rundown on this and look forward to future updates on that.
All right, well, well, thank you very much. And I look forward to talking to you folks again in April.
Thank you. Yes.
Can we take a small break?
Yes, I was just about to say we're gonna, we're gonna take a five minute recess. All righty, we are starting back up at 7:43. We're moving on to discussion item 6B. This is a discussion of downtown pedestrian and traffic safety. Public Works Director Nova Heaton will be presenting.
Good evening, I'm back. Okay, it's time to talk about Second Street Speed Limit Analysis. So per Mayor Redmond's request, the Engineering Department reviewed existing data on the Second Street Corridor. Nope, nope. Oh, no, come on. There goes, okay. There were, there were existing speed studies from both 2014 and 2022. The 2014 speed is presented here, this is what you're seeing right now. You can see the data is broken down by segments and traffic direction. I'm just going to explain along the top there what those different columns mean. So the 50th percentile represents the very middle speed. Half the vehicles are traveling faster and half the vehicles are traveling slower than that speed. The 85th percentile is used by engineers for designing highways for driver safety and indicates that 85% of all vehicles are traveling less than that speed. And then 15% would be traveling higher. Next is the average speed, which in this case is very close to the 50th percentile. The 10 mile an hour pace is the speed range most drivers fall within. And the final column shows what percentage of drivers are within the range. So for example, the first segment represents vehicles heading into town from the west near the wastewater treatment plant. It shows that 78% of vehicles are traveling between 35.8 miles per hour and 45.8 miles per hour. Averaging 40.6 miles per hour, 85% of vehicles are traveling below 44.7 miles per hour and 15% would be traveling above that. Half the vehicles travel above 40.5 miles per hour and half travel below 40.5 miles per hour. So hopefully that kind of explains the table a little bit for you guys. I tried to make this easy to follow by adding some arrows and representing the 50th percentile speed on the map. So the lower part you're seeing down there is the map. And, oh yeah, I just can't see it, sorry. One of my, one of mine is hidden. So let's walk through the corridor, starting westbound traffic heading into the city from Highway 2. As the vehicles come into town over the bridge, driver speeds have reduced to around 33 miles per hour. This makes sense as a driver is beginning to slow down due to traffic signals, vehicles turning and more pedestrians around. By the time they are in the area of Avenue B, they have continued to slow to around 27 miles per hour for those same reasons. We can see that drivers then tend to begin speeding up west of Avenue E to 30, back to 33 miles per hour. This area no longer has any stoplights, curbs or on-street parking. It feels more rural, which to a driver increases the speed that feels comfortable to them. Finally, as traffic is leaving the city, heading into the county, drivers have sped up to around 39 miles per hour. And then just repeating the same exercise now on the bottom of the road, heading eastbound, starting on the left side of the page, we can see a similar effect. Traffic is moving pretty quickly from the county into the city. They begin to slow as they approach the area of the lettered streets. And by the time they've gotten into the heart of downtown, drivers average about 25 miles per hour. Finally, we can see the natural tendency to speed up as they leave the more urban area heading towards Highway 2. All right. So this is the year 2022 speed data. So you can, yeah, 22. So you can see that this is the same behavior remains consistent. You'll also see that the speeds don't vary very much between 22 and 14, indicating the data is a good representation of driver behavior. I can, I can give you a second to kind of, I didn't walk you through this one piece by piece, but I think you should be able to follow it pretty well. 34 down to 26, back up to 33, or 32 down to 24 and back up to 37. So you can really see, there were three data points in 22, there were four locations in, in 20, or in 14. That's why there's kind of those two different areas. So you can kind of see the difference. And then the other thing I want to talk about is that the speeds in 2014 and the speeds in 2022 vary consistently along that same line. They didn't really change much. You can see that this, this is, this is what's happening with driver behavior. It's, and it has been for a long time. Okay, so are there any questions about the speed table before I move on to crash data? Okay, cool. All right, moving on. Okay, oh shoot, I was supposed to point out something and I'm not sure I can go back. Maybe it is, I found it, I found it, okay. I want, before I left, I wanted to point out, right at E, there's a line there and we've dri, we've, we've kind of done some arrows. And I just want to draw your attention to that, that there's a change in those conditions there at Avenue E. And that really has to do with the curb gutter sidewalk, whether or not there's stoplights in that area. So one side, we have one thing and another, we have another thing. And the reason I want to bring that to your attention is you're going to see some differences in, in the crash data between those two areas. Okay. So this next slide is the Wash Dot crash data for the five years, 2019 to 2023. We get, we will get the 2024 data in April. So the whole year will come in April from Wash Dot. You can see that the total, this is the one I wanted to look at. Yes, it was, yes, it was, okay. This is just the, this is not the right, this is the speed data, isn't it? Here we go, sorry guys, okay, crash data. Woo, okay, 2019 to 2022. You can see that we split these. So if you look down at the map at the bottom, you can see the total number of crashes at or nearest to each intersection over the five-year period. As you can see, the numbers from J through F are lower. Avenue E has six and then at D, they jump up significantly. And what I want to point out here is that the area west of D, where driver behavior tends to increase speeds, does not correlate with increased accidents. The largest accidents, incidents of accidents are happening in the area of town where vehicles are traveling between 20 and 30 miles per hour due to the environmental factors that impact driving behavior. So I, I, I just want to point out the, the tendency of the numbers there. And so then the table at the top summarizes the total number of accidents east and west of Avenue E. They have also included the number of those accidents were, were due to excessive speeding, if it was considered a factor in the crash. And you can see that's very low on, in all cases. Which is, you know, what we've kind of been trying to talk about is that we don't believe speed is really necessarily the issue at heart here. And so if it isn't causing the incidents in downtown, then, you know, what is? So here, this table provides those same numbers broken down by the major factors leading to the accidents. And so the most common reason can be contributed, and it's 40, yeah, it's, it's like, Avenue E of these crashes are contributed to traffic violations such as separate, failure to yield the right of way, like somebody turning in front of somebody else or following too close and rear-ending. These are the kind of things that a crash, they would then give a citation to the person involved. So they were, they were not following the law in some way. But I do want to point out, it's not speeding because that has its own separate category. So that is not counted in this number. And then the other being the distraction in, in attention. And I think most of us are pretty familiar with what that means. Cell phones, other people in the car, bratty kids in the back, the radio, whatever. So my kids were never bratty. Can I answer any questions about crash data before we move on?
Councilmember Hellington?
Thank you. Um, is this, so if there is an accident, like somebody rear-ends someone and they pull over and they're like, oh, we're going to be fine, here's my information, and they go on. Is that reported because it's reported on insurance? Or is this just something where a police, you know, had to respond and a citation was issued in some way?
These are more significant accidents. So yeah, the, the smaller fender benders probably would not be included in this because this is the, the, the data from the police reports specifically.
Yeah, good question.
Councilmember Flynn?
I've always been curious to ask, is there, is there any impact that we've seen in the data that has any relation to the Pilchuck Drive-In and their drive-through? There is, it is constantly a backup right there where we have 13 recorded accidents on Maple and Second. And I, I've always been curious how much, if there's any notable data that says there's an impact of people not being able to make that right turn or not being able to cross over Highway 2?
I don't have that information. We could take a look at it, but that'd be really hard for us to draw those conclusions.
Are they in any violation because their, because their driveway is, their drive-through is part of Maple?
This would be existing non-conforming is what this would fall under. If, if a drive-through were to approach the city today to build or maybe even do an update, they would be required to meet current standards. What is actually happening is that the car parked in Maple is violating the law. They are not actually allowed to be there. So it becomes more of a police, a traffic violation matter.
Directly across the street from the police department.
Correct.
Okay, I was, I was just curious.
Have them walk across, I don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any, oh, Councilmember Leonard?
Yeah, I've got numerous.
Yeah, I've got numerous complaints about that and I've almost been T-boned. Because I, light hits, they're backed up to get into Pilchuck Drive and all of a sudden I gotta stop in the intersection. Because people are trying to turn left and then it's all, and I can't, and I just stand there go, oh! But I have gotten a number of complaints from citizens and then had a personal experience. So I, I, there's no, there's nothing we can really do, is there?
Um, I mean, it would, it would be enforcement, so we would have to ask our PD to go out and, um, start issuing warnings or writing tickets for people parked, uh, in, on Maple. And, um, so that's a hard thing to, uh, choose to do. But if you guys direct us to do that, then we will talk to PD about that.
Councilmember Burke.
Uh, I, dito everything Councilmember, Coletta and Flynn have said. I myself have been in numerous near accidents and so I, it's a pub, that particular intersection and that use is a public safety risk. You know, the stacking lane is not Maple. Whether it can be addressed through signage or enforcement or working with the business, but that is, we can't look at this corridor holistically without taking into effect, taking into effect the business impact. But I, I've heard it. I don't like to use my horn, but I do use my horn in that spot. I, I will admit it, I will publicly admit it.
Well, I definitely would suggest attempting to work with the business first. Um, because maybe they could re-sign things so that they, there could be, um, different place for people to park or for them to queue. Um, but, but it is, it, it doesn't, aside from going after drivers, it does put us in a very difficult position because it's an existing non-conforming structure. Okay, any other questions? Ready? You ready for me to move on? Excellent, okay. Okay, so now I wanted to talk about some of the twenty-five, twenty-six pedestrian, city pedestrian safety improvements that we've been working on. So the first one I want to talk about is actually the timing at Lincoln and Second Street. So we got some complaints specifically about people kind of trying to run over the, uh, you know, there's a light there and we have the Centennial Trail crossing right there. And so what would happen is people turning left would just sort of go and the people trying to cross the street on the Centennial Trail, um, would, would, the, the car would already be going as they're trying to step out. So it became kind of a conflict point. Um, we don't manage the lights ourselves, we do that through a contract of the county. But we reached out to them and said, hey, could we put a, like a three-second delay on that so that the ped begins to walk out and it gives the driver that time to notice them because they're in the middle of the road at that point? Um, and they said, yeah, we can. And, and so we have done that at that intersection. And we've seen that that's been a really positive, uh, change for that intersection. Really does help with that kind of, um, uh, ability for people to see before they start to drive and, and make their left turn. Uh, the next thing I want to talk about are the pedestrian flags, uh, which, okay, go ahead.
I, I have noticed that, so I, I do thank you. That's a common spot where you, you, you're describing exactly right. The cars try to beat the pedestrian across or one or the other. Um, is there a way to ask for more than three seconds for the pedestrians to get across that crosswalk? Could we give them five seconds?
Um, we can change the timing. Uh, we started with three and we were kind of reviewing that to see if that worked.
Okay.
Um, so of course we're trying to balance, uh, getting traffic through the intersection and pedestrian safety.
Yeah.
Uh, so far, we've seen really positive things.
I have definitely as well. I'm just thinking just, rather than the pedestrian being the warning cone, giving them a few more extra time. Then it's a few extra seconds to get across would be great, but I have noticed a difference for sure.
Well, let me hit a couple more, um, a couple more of my things then. Uh, so the next one is the pedestrian flags, uh, which we have been working with HDSA to determine the right locations for these pedestrian flags. And so we have purchased bright yellow, they're about this big, I was gonna bring one, I forgot. And they have a little walking person on them, uh, and they are the pedestrian flags that, uh, mostly you see orange. But we found some information that kind of, uh, said that the yellow was a better, a better choice. It has a little person on it walking, which helps people understand what they're for. Uh, we're making con, holders for them. Uh, we expect those to be out fairly soon. And then we're gonna put stickers on it, has a QR code takes to our website. There's a, a website already for this, for the pedestrian flags that you can go, uh, check out and it's got information. And then this is, map here is only for the historic district. And our, our partnership with HDSA is really just for the same area. Um, however, uh, and, and just let me briefly touch on the partnership. The city purchased the initial flags and we are installing them. What HDSA is, uh, going to do is they're gonna have basically volunteers to monitor the flags, take them across, make sure they're not all on one side, and also let us know if there's, um, if it, it turns out that they're all gone or something like that. And then we've also given HDSA the ability to order them themselves as well if they just want to help by filling them and things like that. And then in addition to that, there's a couple other locations throughout the city. Uh, I think near the Centennial Trail at Pine Maple, um, thirteen, no, tenth and, tenth and I, I can't, I can't remember, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, we have a couple other areas. And so we will be, um, reaching out to locals if people are interested in sort of sponsoring an intersection and helping us make sure the flags are getting back or, or letting us know if they're disappearing or things like that. So we're, we're trying to work it as a, a community program, although the, the downtown portion of it is, um, kind of sponsored by the HDSA as well. So it's working out really nice, we're excited about it, and it's just not quite launched yet. But we, we have the stuff and we're getting close. Um, so then also we will be looking at requests for people, uh, because, you know, I know as soon as they go out, we're gonna get requests. So we'll be evaluating requests as they come in and whether or not that intersection works well for one of these flags or not. Okay, so then, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
I anticipate a future request, um, for intersections closest to parks.
Yeah.
In, in school, other school crossings, anywhere where you've got kids and strollers and, and things like that. So Avril or near Avril Field or Hill Park, um, in particular, are, are good spots to keep a list for.
Great, thank you. We'll put them on our, our list. Um, and so then the next thing I wanted to talk about was the rapid repeating flash-in beacons, which we, uh, spoke about briefly when we were talking about, uh, the park as well. These are the flashing lights that are ped-activated. Uh, we did get grant funding to put four in, in the city, um, in twenty-five, twenty-six. And so, uh, this map here, which is kind of hard to see, I apologize about that because it's, it's the whole city and so I didn't want to miss, you know, Pine and Twenty-Second. These are the areas that either we already have one, that's blue, or we, uh, have projects to put them in, that's red. And so you can see that Second Avenue and C is one of those locations where we'd be putting one in, in the next, within the next two years. Uh, A at the Inner Urban Trail is gonna have one, that's kind of a, that has a difficult corner on it. Um, Thirteenth Street and Park, uh, and then Pine Avenue uh, are all locations where you'll see those going in within the next two years. But I do, we do feel like it, mostly they'll be done in twenty-five. Uh, this has been a really, this is a great program. Um, it, it's, it's, doesn't cost very much because our crews do most of the work. And then, uh, the T, uh, the Transportation Board has funded the, um, the equipment. And so it, it worked out really nicely. It doesn't, it, it's easy for them to fund because it doesn't cost them a lot of money. And then we get to put them in. Go ahead.
Uh, could you talk a little bit about the effectiveness of the flashing beacons? Uh, uh, any research data that we have on that? Um, I, I'm pretty familiar with one on Avenue D at the high school and you have to be real careful stepping out when that goes off.
Yeah, um, so rapid repeating flash-in beacons are ideal for lower volume roads and lower speed roads. So when you start to get into a higher volume or a higher speed road, then we're looking at what's called a HAWK. Um, a HAWK is actually a pedestrian signal. So it's going to, to put a stoplight up and stop the vehicles while the pedestrian goes across. There's one on the Centennial Trail out by Centennial Middle School. Yeah, yeah, that's called the HAWK. And so what we've actually, we've proposed that for the crossing of Inner Urban and Maple. Because again, that's a little bit higher volume road, a little bit wider, so it's really, and I would, you know, there, I think that because it's the high school and there's just so many people crossing there, you know, it might, might behoove us to consider upgrading that at some point.
Is it the Inner Urban where it goes and then into Maple so people can access Centennial?
Yeah, that is not currently funded. That was one of our asks. Uh, but yeah, to connect those two trails. Um, and we're hoping to, we'll go again this next year and attempt to get the money for that. It costs a little bit more, I think that that's why. And earlier today, I was kind of speaking about how they really look at whether or not we delivered on our projects. They, we have a lot of projects out with that agency and they're like, you need to deliver on these projects before we're gonna give you a lot more money. So it, it really is important, our, our integrity is important that we, that we meet those deadlines. Okay, so that's the RRFBs going back, just a second here. Okay, so then, um, the next is actually looking at some other signals to review that timing like we talked about at Lincoln and Second Street. Um, we're thinking that Avenue D and First Street might be a good location to look at because that kind of is a similar situation where, uh, the, you know, the traffic starts to make left turns before people step off the sidewalk. And, and I've, I've had to slam on my brakes several times because somebody was like in, you know, that little blind spot between my windshield. And, and I just like, oh, you know, uh, it, and so I think that that, I think it helps to give people a little head start, basically. Uh, the caveat with that is some of our lights are, our signals are older and they may not be able to be timed in that manner. So we were, we're working with the county to find out whether or not we can do that on some of these other locations. And then, uh, the last thing I wanted to just talk about as far as, you know, sort of especially around Second Street and pedestrian safety is the changeable message signs that we got this last year. Um, and we have been, you know, kind of getting our feet wet with putting those out, making sure we have safe locations to locate them. Uh, they are, we purchased them at, and in the case of an emergency, emergency management. So we could communicate with, um, with our, with our citizenry if other things are out or down. Um, but we want to make sure we know how to use them, we know where to put them up, and it's, becomes like habit. So I'm, I've been kind of forcing my streets crews to take them out and put them out. And so we're gonna use those as part of our, um, pedestrian safety improvement campaign in twenty-five and twenty-six. So I guess my next slide just says next steps, question mark? Because I, I, I guess we're, at this point, we're really looking for feedback from you on, am I headed the right direction? Is there something I'm missing? Uh, do you need more studies? Do we need to reduce the speed limit? I think those are kind of the basic, I need you guys to, to let me know.
Can I, just real quick, I want to clarify, uh, one of Nova's comments on more studies. So if we want to look at more recent data, what she presented was twenty-fourteen and twenty-twenty-two. This would require us going out to a consultant and hiring somebody to do the speed study, like you saw on those tables, which is not currently in the budget. So if council would like staff to look at an updated speed study, this would have to be something that we would find funding for and bring to you as a budget amendment.
Councilmember Coletta.
So it looks good. So how do you figure out, you know, implement all this stuff to figure out how effective it is? Then do you have to pay to do another stu, I mean, you know, you have to give it some time, obviously. So how does that work? Like you put all this stuff in place to see the effectiveness or non-effective, you know, how, how does that go after this?
There are several ways we can handle that. I mean, there's a lot of ways we take feedback, right? First of all, it is actually just comments from citizens, you know, they, they, they let us know. They, they tell us which intersections they're struggling with and then we see it too. We are out there, we've, we've got eyes on, on the city. We could do, um, a, a study. There are studies, uh, around pedestrians, uh, the number crossing, different things like that. That's a, a fairly expensive outing because it's like essentially putting smart technology cameras up to count the number of people walking across the street and different things like that. But there are, um, consultants that do that. I've seen those studies on the Centennial Trail before to look at numbers and that kind of thing. Um, so I guess that, that's a question for council, right? And so we would perhaps put some stuff into place, see how it's going, see what the feedback is, see how we feel about that. And then if we don't feel like that's enough, maybe we do some studies. So, um, the other thing I guess I would throw out there is that, you know, we are trying to fund that Second Street Master Plan, which changes some of those hard factors I was talking about that affect driver behavior. So when you create a more urban corridor on Second Street, it will slow people down. When we put bulb-outs for our pedestrians to stand on before they step into the road, they're much more visible when there's a car parked there or things like that. So these are all the kind of road changes that can affect driver behavior, which is proven to be the most effective thing.
Um, Councilmember Covington and then Councilmember.
Thank you for all this information. Um, I understand what you're saying about the improvements that will come with our Second Street Master Plan and that those are the most effective things and that this study is kind of like what is happening now, what can we do? Have we seriously considered lowering the speed limit just within the city? You can kind of see that, you know, on the outside, high speeds, it gets lower and then, you know, you see it in both directions like you showed us. That obviously would require enforcement and whatnot. Is that a realistic option that we should be talking about? Or is it just gonna be something that is harder to enforce and we just need to wait for the Second Street Master Plan to really provide actual solutions?
The answer to both of those questions is yes. It is realistic for us to reduce the speed limit. We can do that. It would have minor effects. What would be required is absen, absolutely the PD would have to do enforcement. There are really no other way. Um, and then you kind of balance that with the speed limit isn't what's causing, you know, the speeding isn't what's causing the accidents. So it is something that could be done. Is it an exercise in frutility? If we don't have PD out there writing tickets, people are gonna drive the way the road feels, that, that's just the way it goes. Uh, we could do some of the flashing signs that say slow down. Those are, those are kind of effective. They're effective for a while at least. Um, you know, different things like that. So there are other things I, we can look at. Uh, we can, we can reduce the speed limit if that's something that, you know, that, that the council feels strongly about. Um, I don't, I don't believe that the data I presented today supports that as the best option. But that doesn't mean it, it's a hurtful or harmful option. Thank you.
Well, um, and I would say too, that the data that was looked at was actually vehicle speeds, vehicle safety versus pedestrian safety. Which is, I think where some of this discussion has kind of stemmed from was looking at flags and things like that as a way to protect pedestrians that are going across Second Street from injury. And we know we have Target Zero and we've got complete streets that we have instituted in order to focus more on the pedestrian aspect of transportation. So the speed study was looking at the speed of vehicles and the number of incidents involving primarily vehicles and vehicles. Not necessarily pedestrians. And thankfully, there weren't any pedestrian, I think.
I, I can go back. I did, we did actually pull out all the pedestrian ones. Let me go back.
But that's just where the, the community has asked us to look at how we can ensure that vehicular traffic is not causing hazardous conditions for pedestrians in town. So I think, I mean, we're talking about data that isn't necessarily addressing the primary that was the basis of why we're talking about this in the first place.
So I'll just read this real quick for you. Uh, motor, uh, one crash involved a bicycle in twenty-twenty at Lincoln Avenue. Motorists disregarded the traffic signal. One crash involved a pedestrian in twenty-twenty-two at Avenue B, circumstances not identified in the crash data. Which it happens, average daily traffic volume, oh, then it just goes into that, the, the daily traffic and how it's gone up over the time. So it, there was really just the two, one with a bicycle and one with a ped in this corridor that was identified. So, I, I mean, I don't want to say, we don't have them, so it's not important. It is important. I think it's really important to our citizenry, to our city, to everybody. Um, I just am not sure that reducing the speed limit is the answer we're looking for. However, you know, if we choose to do it, you know, we can, we can swap out some signs and, and flag them and do that and put, you know, changeable message signs that say, you know, speed limit reduced. But we're going to need to have our PD out there writing tickets and enforcing that.
Councilmember Burke and then Councilmember.
Yeah, given the, the, the future plans for revision, the master planning for the Second Avenue, and I don't see a benefit in running a third study. I think this data is pretty consistent. And I, I don't think we've heard anything from the PD that warrants changes of behavior. This is, this is just what folks do. I'm not opposed to lowering the speed limit, whether it's with a flashing sign or something in the interim. You know, we are hearing from community that that is an issue and it could be something that we could be doing in the interim. It, whether or not it will solve the problem remains to be seen. You know, because it's often folks that are abiding by this speed limit are not the ones causing the problem. So yeah, flexible on that.
Council President Merrill.
We went around and around on this about five years ago, I think. And we did put some reduced speed limits out in some places like North Pine. I think we lowered the speed limit to 20 and maybe a few other places. Do we have any data telling us that that improved one, reduced speeds? And two, improved the sense of pedestrian safety that people have when they're walking in those areas?
I'm not prepared to speak about those other areas today, but I can look into that and get back to you.
It'd be worthwhile because we don't really need to do a study. I've collected data from where we've tried it before. And given some recent complaints on North Pine, it doesn't seem as though reducing the speed limit caused a whole lot, achieved the level of speed that the people and residents in that area would like to have.
And I'm, I might be wrong, but I think we put one of those changeable message signs there. The flashing speed signs and those do log data. So we can pull that data to look and see what, what the effect of the speed limit has been on that.
Councilmember Neils and then Councilmember Flynn.
Thanks for all of this. It's greatly appreciated. I, I think that eventually there's going to be something we'll have to consider with all of the other places that are growing around us a lot faster than we are. I think we're going to continue to be a cut through. Lake Stevens is continuing to build like there's no tomorrow. Monroe is becoming quite a target for people that live in Bellevue. And it's drawing traffic through here. And while our data consistently supports that there's average speeds here, I think that the amount of people traveling is going to increase, which means the likelihood that something else might happen. We'll probably statistically, we would indicate that we might have more there. So whether there's a combination of, I like, traffic calming is like a phrase I should just probably adopt because I like that phrase. But whatever those measures are, whether it's a combination of speed signs and lowering the speed limit or other things that we can do, it would be helpful, I think, just to think about multi-layered ways to do this. And to have some element of thinking about a rapid response might be if we see things pop up like we hear from the public all the time also. So it's, for me, it's multi-layered. How do we think about the impacts of what we have to be prepared for? And how do we think about places where we can maybe move things if we have to make sure that we're responding to places where people tell us maybe it wasn't happening, you know, a year ago, but now this is a problem. So just something to consider. Thank you.
Councilmember Flynn.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I don't think we need another study with all the changes that are coming. But I'm, I'm an advocate for changing the speed limit. I think that the five mile an hour rule, it's safe to go five miles an hour is the average for most people. So reducing it down another five miles an hour would, would be a, an impact, I think, as well as less injury when we do have less severe of injuries if we do have an accident or more of them. As well as I think it would give the police department more leeway to enforce that rather than trying to track somebody down who's doing five over a higher speed limit versus having that slower. I think it would slow down the average. I don't think it's going to affect the speeder who wants to speed. But I, I advocate for the lower speed limits or even a universal speed limit throughout the city so that there isn't a question of where we can and can't go five or 10 miles an hour over. So that's my comment. And thank you for all the information too and all that work.
Council, any further feedback for Director Heaton? Council President Merrill, you're looking at me. Okay.
Is it possible for me to get like an official vote on that speed limit? Or do you want me to bring it back to you? I don't, I.
From Councilmember Flynn's point, what is, what makes the most sense? Is it to lower the speed on Second from 30 to 25? Or is it to say the entire city is 25? Or is that just like a massive?
No, I think that, I mean, it would be 25 unless otherwise posted is, is how we would do that. And so that, that starts out kind of easy and then we could slowly start replacing other signs. So it kind of covers us. We even have some areas of town that the speed limit is lower than 25, actually.
Downtown.
Yeah. So I, I think it, either one can work.
Do you think it's even necessary? The only place I can even think of off the top of my head is what we're talking about. So I'm asking more of like, and that's, that's just my recollection. So I'm asking you, is that something that would make sense? Or should we just focus on what we're talking about?
So would council like me to go back and give you a few options? And, and like maybe the cost associated with those or?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm asking is like, is there one, is there one choice that would make the most sense to be cost effective and make one decision that would accomplish what we're talking about over the other?
I can, I would, I would have to, I'd have to look at it. I mean, the, the cost of, I'm not sure which one makes the most sense. So I would, I would need to look at it to make that kind of a decision and I could come back and, and recommend it. Yeah, I, I think that the thing that makes the most sense is like Councilman Neil said, it's the multi-layered approach. And, and so that is what we're trying to do. That's exactly what I'm trying to describe is, you know, these are the hotspots. These, we are trying to react right away and as effectively as possible with limited time and budget. So.
Well, what do you guys think?
Council President Merrill.
A couple of things that I would like to see is one, I'd like to know how effective it's been on lowering the speed limit. Hotspots and as been presented before, is there a multi-layer in there that would address it? I really picked up on the words you said really early on about people will pick their speed up to the level that the road will give them, that they feel comfortable with. So putting a 20 mile an hour out there, coming down off of Highway nine and getting to the first stoplight on D is probably not going to, not going to work. But maybe down in the core of town, a lower speed limit and, and some other, other things that you have talked about would work. So I would be more in favor of being thoughtful on placement, the multi-layer approach. And as much as I would like to see traffic slow down in front of my house to a reasonable speed, the, the road will, will carry it at that. And if there's nobody out there, they're going to drive whatever speed they want.
Councilmember Kuzak.
Yeah, I would say that I really like your presentation about pedestrian safety. And data really seemed to show, as you point out, that speed is not the reason for any kind of pedestrian accidents. But I do think that at some point in time, having a universal 25 mile an hour across the city is appropriate. But that's a different thing than we're dealing with today and tonight in this presentation. So I'm not, I don't see that reducing the speed limit on Second Street at this point in time and increasing enforcement is going to get us what we want until we're going to be getting the Second Street plan manifest at some point in time. And so meantime, you're looking at 25, 26 for those proposals that you have. And that seems to me to be quite fine. And at some point in time, we, when we can, 25 miles an hour across the whole city, I think makes a lot of sense.
And I think we would have to have your analysis on what the impacts would be to sort of the Bickford corridor. Because I know that parts of that are significantly higher than 25 and what are the impacts of that? And I think we'd have to have a speed study done to decrease that area.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have to look at it closer. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll come back with a proposal to do, to find out what, what it's going to take to, to study that and put that into place. In the meantime, we'll make sure we're using the, the other things we've talked about to try to reduce speeds and, and increase people's pedestrian awareness as well as, you know, get off your phones kind of thing.
Well, and speed is always an issue. It could leave you less time to respond to someone walking out of the street.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. And then we have last discussion item of the night, 6C update. Sorry, did I miss anybody that wanted to ask a question? Okay. We have the update on city branding and signage. And I believe Sheri, you're going to be starting off with this, right?
I'm starting off, yes.
Community Engagement and Strategic Initiatives Director Sheri Hird.
Thank you, or whatever you want to call me tonight. First of all, thank you for your patience with upstairs. We are doing what council asked us to, which is renting out the space a lot this spring. So we have a women's business group upstairs. And second of all, because I know they're listening and I want to give a shout out to my team. This is related to the Homestead Park Master Plan, the survey and marketing. They did a fantastic job from October through January getting engagement and marketing that, those surveys. It was the 10th highest web hit on our website for three months, the master page, master plan page. So I want to give them a shout out. So, okay. At the moment, you've all been waiting for you. Don't care about any of that stuff. So I always like to go back where we started, just for a little walk down memory lane. Council allocated some funding in 23, 24 for arts and culture. We didn't really have any specific programs at the time to fund. So says he came up with some initiatives brought to council that were approved. That include public art projects like the planters that you see on First Street, some community culture events, which we held here in the Carnegie, some micro grants for some arts and culture events also held here, and then a gateway signage project, which is long overdue for helping with our placemaking. As part of the discussion around signage, as a leadership team, we discussed that one of the things we were probably going to have to do is a brand refresh. Our logo hadn't been updated since 2017. Usually the standard in the industry is somewhere between five to seven years. So it was a good time to do that. As you'll remember from the February 4th council meeting, we had Mary from Pickled Flower attend the meeting and talk about the, the process for hiring her on. She's actually in attendance tonight. She's been sitting. We're so excited to see her in person because we've only met her through Zoom. And so starting in late 2024, Director Heaton, Director Item, and with our support from Public Works Project Coordinator Siobhan, we put together an RFP, put out a call for proposals. We received 22, went through, selected Mary and her team. Where are we now? So when we met with the, oh, wow, where are we now? I was all ready to go. And I can't talk and do this at the same time this late at night, so you'll have to bear with me. Thank you, Brooke. It really is a team effort. None of this is happening. So we basically gave Mary a very high hurdle to climb over, which was, you know, what we really liked about, what we really wanted from the design is something simple and timeless. We really wanted to maintain that, that mountains, river, field, city feel about it that has really kind of taken on the identity of, of the community. Kind of honoring the past while leaning into the future with that sort of pathway moving forward. We wanted to remove the wordmark from it for clearer representation and more flexibility in use. And that said, we wanted a wordmark that could be used independently of the logo with a unique font family. We wanted to expand our palette outside of the green, white and blues. We also wanted some design elements to pull out of the logo to use across different things, whether it's signs or PowerPoint things. It needed to work with signage design, which was obviously how this whole project started. And it needed to render well in black and white or grayscale. In addition, I, Mary mentioned that they conducted a survey around signage for the community. It was, we had a lot of respondents. And while that was really focused on the signs, they pulled some consistent pieces that they were hearing from the community that they, and we agreed as a group, needed to be maintained in, in that brand identity. Things like historic, welcoming, friendly, scenic, that we're a traditional small town feel. So after nine hours of meetings and much refinement, see if I can move forward. I'm happy to unveil to you the logo design. I'm going to throw it up with some of the, with kind of showing where we started from and where we are. One of the things you'll notice is there is an S, that road that leads through the design kind of takes you from those fields and through the town and, and up into the mountains. We've expanded our palette. Mary's team really brought in these last three colors, which sort of represent a lot of the historic feel. It's that brick. It's the golden sunshine that we get in those beautiful mornings and sunsets here. And as you can see, because it works with our existing palette, it easily fits in with most of our components that already exist for graphics, which is going to save us a lot of money, which is very nice. We also think it looks really great on some swag. And again, just this new design allows us to do more with those design elements, blowing it up, pulling pieces out, just to make things more graphically interesting. Mary's team is also working on providing us with some assets that will go with that for, again, things like PowerPoints, things where we'll have things in the background, focusing on skydivers, Blackman's Lake, bicycles, the bicycle tree, Victorian homes and the railroad tracks. And again, it really does well across social media as well. And you can see some of those design elements in these examples here. Again, the color palette is just much more flexible. So we can do dark designs, lighter, mixing it with photos. And now I'm going to turn it over to Snowmish.
Okay, so she got to unveil, but I get to sell you. Because I think that when we first saw it and we first started talking about it, it, we were like, okay, yeah, yeah, it's all right. And then we started to see it on signs and we started to see its potential. And I think that's really what sold us. So what you see pictures of here right now are the existing signage at the Centennial Trail and at Avril Field. And so, you know, what we want is we want signs that reflect our brand and character. We want it to not clash with these per se or kind of, you know, go along with them. So we're not having to change everything out. We want ease of maintenance. It's a very high priority to us that they, you know, they're easy for us to care for, that they're not going to take a lot of extra time or money or anything like that. We want the history of Snohomish to be reflected. I mean, that's where we're talking materials and things like that. Go ahead, Sheri. Sorry, you got to do this. So these are the kinds of materials that we looked at and talked about and are what we're currently proposing to move forward with. So you see like the, that kind of metal color will have the ability to really kind of reflect the metallic, that industry standard we've had. You'll see the. metal color will have the ability to really kind of reflect the metallic, that industry standard we've had. You'll see the rock to sort of reflect the river and things like that. We've got power powder coating. We've got natural wood, and then we have aluminum shine. So we're just trying to kind of bring the old and the kind of current all together in this. Okay, next slide. So this is what we're proposing for the City of Snohomish welcome signs because it kind of the the entry way to the sign. So that brown area you're seeing would be that kind of rusty metal kind of look. The silver would be the stainless steel. We've got the yellow that we brought in, pulled into on this. We decided to call it tabby because it looks like a little tab on top of the sign. At the top, you see that S curve that's kind of a reflection of the S curve that's in the logo itself and the City of Snohomish and the river. You'll kind of see this throughout, kind of pulled into the different sign styles. So this monument sign would be like coming into town at on Second Street or Bickford or something like that. Those would be sort of the entry to the town kind of signs that that this is what we're looking at here. Next, this is the back of the sign where we've kind of, you know, got kind of fun with it and just said the the date that it was incorporated in. And I I think we all kind of just like that as a simple addition and and nod to our heritage. Next. This would be what the the roundabout sign that's currently kind of hiding there on the bottom right would look like. So, you know, some of the things we're looking at is really trying to make it more readable. So the the letters are larger, they're more bold, they're going to stand out better, and then additional color as well. So this is this is if we were to update the existing roundabout sign, this is what this is the concept right now. Next. These are probably my favorite. So these are the the park signs. So once again, you see that kind of S curve happening right there. And then the logo there and that yellow color with the address on it. You see the natural wood with the silver. So we kind of see those same echoed styles being used over and over again. And then this is obviously just a concept, but the way we are able to utilize something behind it and create that 3D effect for each individual park. So now you have the brown sign, which really is the city look. It is consistent through each park. All the parks look like that. But now you have the ability to individualize each park in its own way, in its own manner, with its own identity, without giving away from that consistent look. And you can see again that that S curve on the bottom of the sign there instead of on the top. Next one. Okay, so I like this a lot. This is what they reimagined sort of the Avril Field Centennial Trail type of signs on the on the right there to look like. And I love the way the the dual lines there kind of mimic the the close lines in the city logo there. So when you're looking at that green section of the city logo, on the right, there's fields. On the left, it kind of it it hints at our city's structure, where we have that grid structure laid out, which is kind of an old fashioned structure for for streets and roads. Unfortunately, traffic engineers went way off base and and decided to change the grid structure, which ended up being terribly wrong. But we still have a very grid structure to our roadway system. So that's kind of what you're seeing there. But it also sort of reflects the fields as well. And then I I just really like the way those parallel lines kind of mimicked that. This here would be the concept at the Riverfront Trail near the bathrooms where it goes down the stairs. And that's the existing one you're seeing there. It's kind of heavy and it is a a maintenance issue. And so this would be a a concept for replacing that. So it's fairly simple, has the logo, it it tells you where you are, where you're going, different things like that. And so this would be the concept for something, any kind of more like not wide overhead walkway. This would be like, so we talked about having different neighborhoods be able to have their own identity. So what you're looking at here is actually the idea that as the city, we don't know what right now, what the neighborhoods are going to be, what their identity is or anything like that. So what we're able to offer with this is that little logo up at the top be installed on the lights and then have banners for for the different neighborhoods so they can create their own personality and their own banner to go along the streets and kind of brighten their area and identify with how they feel. But doing it with while we still have that connected to the city feel up at the top up there. And I think that this cutout really is a big part of why we like the logo, like being able to see the logo both in color and then also as this sort of cutout really helps you envision why it's why it's able to be used in many different ways and many different applications. And one thing we all kind of thought about is sort of has this stained glass look. And we were thinking about, you know, could we take the logo and have a really large stained glass like at the new Civic campus or something like that as you're entering into the the Civic campus. So different things like that got us inspired. We could, I could imagine cross stitch. I could, you know, so it there was just something about the way the logo was able to be so used in so many different ways that that was kind of exciting for us. And then this creates that consistency throughout the city. So when new buildings go in and say the Pilchuck District and they want to have their own identity, we're giving them that place for that, but we're still giving city consistency. Okay, go ahead. And then this is where we're talking about the wayfinding signs. So on the the left would be pedestrian wayfinding signs like you might see downtown that tells you where different things are, shops and stuff like that. We also want to work with the tribes to on the blue, the skinny blue side. It's it's pretty hard to see from far away, but we want to do some native translations. And we thought that would be really great to have their input on that and some of that stuff in there. And then on then you see the other wayfinding signs that would be for like civic campuses or trails or different things like that. That's more in the middle with the, again, that cutout at the top, kind of bringing consistency. And then I wish it was a little closer or a little easier to see, but I really like that detail on the top of these signs that are rounded there because that says the City of Snohomish at the top there in a cutout. And I I think it looks really sharp, but it's, yeah, there you go. I really like it a lot. I think it looks really nice. Now you got to zoom back out. Okay, so these would be the vehicle wayfinding type of signs. So very similar feel, very similar idea. We're pulling that S curve back through it, different things like this. They're just larger so you can see them from a vehicle. Next. Is that it? Okay, that's it. So we are absolutely really wanting some feedback from council on the signs, the the way that we've used the materials. Do you like it? Do you not like it? The different kinds of color choices, things like that. And you don't even have to give me all of these today. We, you know, you can you can email me or you can send me more information about the signs, thoughts, ideas, anything like that. And then we we will be having that open house on the twentieth that we mentioned. So you'll see that. Oh, I also wanted to say some of that line work that you saw earlier in Sheri's presentation where it had the town and it had the bridge. You're going to see some of that 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 city right there in the top, the the buildings, you're going to see that on the First Street Master Plan stuff. So we've got, we're already starting to pull some of these, this line work and this this idea in to use in our in our different flyers and things that we're putting out. So pretty exciting stuff to be working towards.
Can I just add, I've this, I've worked on many logo refresh, rebrands, redesign over many years in government. And I think I want to go back to something Nova said, the versatility of this design. I know I'm really looking forward to it in the graphic ways. We've been really kind of struggling with our current palette and just options. And so having all this is kind of like, it's just opened it up exponentially for the different things we can do, just even in-house in Canva, very simple and very easy and clean to use, so.
And I'll chime in just one to thank everybody for the work on all of this. I want to be clear on a couple of pieces. This isn't something that requires council vote. And then also, we are not planning to go out and change everything in the next 12 months. So the examples of like Avril Field and Centennial Trail, there's not a plan to change those. It's just projects as they come up, we will start to incorporate them. There's some signs that are definitely in need of repair as we do new parks. As we work on wayfinding in particular, that's where you'll start to see them come to light, but it's not a wholesale change everything in the next 12 months. Councilmember Brooke?
Having also suffered through the process of logo design, which is so challenging. This looks great. Like, I could definitely, I was thinking, oh, that's a stained glass platte map, you know. So, yeah, just well done on the process. I think this is unique. It's happy, looks happy. I kind of like those happy. So, thank you.
Councilmember Coletta?
I just need to back up on something Ms. Irtan said earlier. You said we hadn't looked at our brand refresh. I guess that's what you call it since 2017? Okay, so I'm just playing skeptic here for a minute. So, I mean, this is great. I don't have any problem with it. I mean, I look at it and the amount of time that goes into this thing is tremendous. I mean, you know, the process. But I'm trying to understand that. I mean, I'll I won't be on council 10, 15 years from now, but is somebody going to go, oh, we need a new band refresh? And I don't even want to think of the amount of cost this is. I mean, it sounds like you're just gonna implement it as signs are needed. But I look at the City of Snohomish one up on the roundabout, which, yeah, this one would be an improvement looking at it, but I know that thing isn't that old and I'm trying to, I don't know how much that cost. Or the one on Centennial Trail, even though that's a county, did we pay for that? The one that's over by the Boys and Girls Club? Because I know that's a county city. So I'm just trying to understand, because I know there's some other places when you come in off of Nine on Second, there's this beat up old sign that's overgrown. You're going, oh, my God. But I'm just, it says no fiscal impact, but at some point there's going to be a fiscal impact. So I think I I really need to understand that better. On its face, I'm not arguing with the designs, the colors, it's happy, this and that, historic, but then I'm thinking about the cost. I mean, like you said, business cards, logos and all the new vehicles. I mean, it just
I would love to take this one.
Oh, good.
Okay, yeah.
No, that's fine. I just want to
So, so for me, as the Public Works Director, one of the biggest reasons for this is the Pilchuck Julia Park. We have money to do signage there. And so what we wanted to do is come up with a consistent plan that we could use for years and years and years. And what we're getting out of this is a logo that is professionally designed, which the other ones have not been, is able to be used in many different ways. And, sorry, Brooke. Brooke, Brooke, Brooke designed the current one, and she did an excellent job. And and yeah, so, yeah. And then, yeah, we would, we would just, as we get a new vehicle, we would put the new logo on it as we, you know, as a as a new park sign goes in. We have no intentions of ripping down the Avril Field sign or the Centennial Trail sign. We don't even really have an intention of changing the roundabout sign right away. But it isn't, you know, so it's just that as we get money for it or as we have a funding, if we happen to do improvement projects at the roundabout or something like that, then maybe we would do it at that time. So it becomes this long term consistency plan so that we can continue to make sure we're moving in that same direction for well past our time here. And can I
Where's the money on the line item? Where does it come out of? General or where?
For for what? For this?
Yeah.
This project right now?
Well, I know that you already contracted with Pickled Flower.
Yeah.
You know, I get that, but
We have, so for the Pilchuck Julia, that is a parks project because we needed signs there. We also have some wayfinding money also for that's split between streets and parks for the downtown area and the Riverfront Trail. So we're looking at like, you know, it's this many miles to Katy Park and different things like that. And also, one of the things we've talked about with First Street Master Plan is is bringing the Klahia Park more into view. And so something like that where it's an overhead sign that's like, hey, we have a park hiding down here kind of thing. So for me, it really was a need. It really was a need. You've seen our old wooden signs at the parks. They're a high maintenance issue and they rot. It's just not a long term thing. So I needed a solution. So I think that this is this is a smart use of funds because we're putting the money in now in order to have something that can last us a long time.
Yeah, and can I just add one thing quickly for my department? We really have no cost because we're just using the design and the elements of things that we're already doing, PowerPoints, all the things we do in Canva. It's just now expanded. The design that we can do, we're not so limited. So the things we can produce looks fresher. It's matching more with what we're hearing from the community where we want to have that historic piece, but future moving, so.
And it'll tie into, you know, we've got the master plans coming in. So there's opportunities in the future. This is really setting the ground floor moving forward. So there is not a fiscal impact at this moment because we're, that's why I said it's not going to be all replaced in 12 months. It's as a project comes up, it's built into the project costs. As people need to get new business cards, not that we use tons of business cards, they'll be in a new format as we update our letterhead and envelopes as they come due. So again, it's over time. There's not a built in cost because it's just part of our normal supply budget, unless there's an identified capital project or small works project.
So how what would qualify as a capital project? Because some of those, they're beautiful. I don't have any problem with the designs or anything, but some of that stuff looks expensive. So I'm just trying to understand that a little better. Thank you.
Well, some of that stuff, like, say, the the signs that would go up for the neighborhoods would actually be built by the developer, right? So when they're building the right of way, part of their right of way improvement would then be to put that. But if I don't have the standards and the locations for those, then I can't have the developer build it to that standard. So this is why standards for me are so important because, you know, this is a great point, the cities, but as they do this beautiful new right of way area in front of, say, on on Avenue D up there, you know, I I we could have them put these up and then there's they're ready for banners when they decide what that corridor's banner is going to be and we can we can move forward that way.
Yeah, but I can ask, some of the signs that I think that's great. You know, I've seen this in many other cities or big fancy ski resorts like Whistler, they got wayfinding stuff everywhere so you don't get lost. They even have it up at Stevens Pass so you don't get lost. You know, just wayfinding. I get that with logos. But some of the bigger signs, they just, they just look really expensive. I mean, they're they're classy, they're elegant, they they really speak to us. But how does that get budgeted in? Because that's a bigger ticket item. So I'm just trying to understand that a little better.
So we those will be future budgets and or we apply for a grant, like some tourism tourism dollars or something else down the road. These are not, unless they're already in the budget, like there is some wayfinding budget in there for First Street and for some of these parks. As we build new parks like Pilchuck Julia Landings in there, when we look at Homestead Park or we look at some trail improvements, this is where, when they're budgeted, they will be built to this new standard. And then I just want to throw out, like, we, now I forgot what I was going to say. It's gone. It's completely gone. I'm sorry. Don't remember.
No, thank you. Councilmember Neils?
My only curiosity question is, do we know how many things we'd have to replace? I mean, over the course of however long it is, it's you've already made a decision to go with something. The design is very extensible and has a lot of versatility. So I don't think, I'm not questioning any of that. But over the, and it's not even something I need necessarily to be answered in this moment, but how many things would we be replacing, I guess, is the thing I wonder? Just out of curiosity.
Well, I would say just for the parks example, because that's one of, it's it's the thing that was driving it mostly for me. That'd be probably over the 20-year park prose plan, I have put improvements to each park across that 20-year plan, right? So those signs are rotting that are there now or they don't exist. And so this would And so this would be what we would replace those with across a 20-year plan. So you think about the parks, the existing parks in the city, and we're gonna replace them over 20 years. And then I remembered the thing I was gonna say, which is that we have talked about material costs and asked our consultant to consider that. And so a lot of the materials aren't maybe as expensive as you're envisioning them to be. We are absolutely talking cost of materials as we move through this.
Yeah, can I add, one of the things that makes Mary's team unique is that she has a fabricator on her team in addition to landscape architects and planners. So they bring in that perspective as well.
Thank you. Because my curiosity question was, even if we weren't changing anything, we'd have a plan to replace things. So whatever we replace them with, there's a budget for it. So I just want to kind of overlay that into whatever we're talking about. Thank you.
Does Council have any further questions for Steph? All right, so if you, go ahead, Councilmember. Council President Merrill? No, okay. I just want to.
You want, well, you want to make sure I have any comments? Only comment I have at this point, I love the colors. I have some questions on some of the design elements that I want to talk about. So I guess my question at this point is, how locked in are we on everything on here?
Talking about the logo or some of the logo itself?
Well, the two things come, I have a logo and font.
So we came to unveil it.
Okay.
So we're locked in.
Okay, so that answered my question. I'm gonna spend a whole lot of time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a pleading glance to Councilmember Burke, who has said that she's gone through this process before. I will say that I went through the rebranding process at the University of Washington, which you think would be easy. Convincing all those alumni, students, departments all over the world to use a single purple block W took 18 months and several million dollars. So I'm grateful that we don't have to do that process here.
It's awful. Designed by committee is so hard. It is so hard and there's lots of feelings and you have to look at, you know, the, the legibility and so many mediums and I don't want to even talk about it anymore. It's giving me stress.
I want to answer Tom's question. We came to this meeting with the, uh, the headset of if it doesn't have an offensive symbol in it in some way that we missed, it's done.
So it's absolutely gorgeous and I can't wait to see it.
All right, Council, um, I need to point out that we have a statutory time limit here. Uh, nine o'clock, we need to have this meeting extended formally by a motion and approval by council because we still have also an executive session at the end of this meeting. Um, and I would say we probably need to extend it to nine, nine forty-five.
I move, we extend the night's session to nine forty-five? Second.
It's been moved by Council President Merrill and seconded by Councilmember Neils. All those in favor? I need to hear ayes if I, okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, free to queue, Council. All right, any, any further discussion for, on the branding and signage? Okay, I just want to thank staff for all the hours I went into it. I know that it was very thoughtfully done. Um, and it gives us many more assets to use in many number of ways. So I, I thank you for the thoughtful approach to it and thank you, Mary, for your and your team's work. And she's a local, she's one of us here, so she understands us. Thank you, Mary.
Go home.
Yes. Okay. This is an information items and I'm going to take my privilege here. Because when I was at Hagan for my monthly, um, just meetup with the mayor thing, I had a young man who was seven years old by the name of Jack come with his family and he waited patiently while I spoke with another constituent for good length of time. And then he came up to me and he presented me with, um, this written essay. Um, and he had all of his class members sign it on the back, so you can see that. So this is what, um, Jack wrote for me. This is an argument against littering. Littering is bad for the world. We should ban littering and make huge laws to stop it. Please vote no to littering because it is bad for the planet. Littering is bad. So, I, I didn't even count, but there are multiple, multiple signatures from his classmates that he collected. So I just wanted, I told him I would read it to council. And then I did send to his mom, who provided an email for me. Um, I provided him with our current code, um, that is, that bans littering. So he has that and I told him that I would help him if he wanted to make any adjustments to that code to come to council and speak to you all. So you may see seven-year-old Jack here sometime in the future. Um, and he's also providing an example to his three-year-old brother, who was with him, of how you can make a difference in your community. So I just wanted to share that. All right, Councilmember Coletta?
Two things, just looking for updates and if you can't answer it now, that's fine. Uh, number one, I think it was a couple meetings ago, Bonnie Headley wanted to know what was going on with the trees downtown. Are you able to answer that? And if not, I'll just later?
Yeah, I'll ask, uh. Uh, yeah, so they're, they're just, it's on their schedule, they've been super busy. But they, they should be getting it done and within the next month, I'm sure, but yeah, they're.
Yeah, I think she was concerned because of the, you don't want to get into the dry season. I think that's what did those others in. Because I had to, I was working at the bakery and they, I don't think they were put in, they should have been.
And I know she's, when she did ask, we verified with staff, our staff are in contact with Greens of Snohomish. So we're keeping them up to date on the plans.
And number two, um, quickly, I know I'd asked to see if we could get one of our legislatures to just give us an update, um, just.
We're reaching out, uh, trying to get them on the schedule after session and so, end of April, early May. So we'll, they were busy in the last week or two because of cutoffs.
Yeah. Councilmember Burke?
A curiosity, um, I'm wondering if there is any information available about, um, the city's restriction on cannabis sales and how that may or may not affect our ability to access tax revenue that's generated by sales in other parts of the state?
Um, at the last, um, AWC Budget Conference that I attended, the, um, Auditor's Office had actually brought that up as something that the legislature was supposedly looking at banning any cities who have a ban on the books from receiving any future ever, um, cannabis retail sales from across the state. So I asked our legislators and I asked, um, AWC's, um, Government Affairs, uh, people if there was any movement on that going forward. And at this time, there is not. But it is something for council to consider that there may be some movement toward that in the future. I think they were busy working on much more pressing things this session. But it's possible that will come back up and that will be a question for, a policy question at that time, whether or not, um, that's something to revisit so that in the future or so that you can still get a cut from the state sales. Um, we can do zoning within town so that really it's not illegal, but it wouldn't really be feasible for, um, a shop to be in town. That is something that other cities have done. So that is something that is for the future discussion, but not today.
Yeah, I, I definitely understand that that's not today, but I did want to introduce it as a subject because the, it has now been legalized for several years. And as the industry has matured and communities have matured and how they, they work with them and, and deal with them, I think it definitely merits a revisit and another conversation.
Councilmember Guzzi?
Can I just present a little background on that? So the city council did ban it, but we did look at zoning it and there, we did some zoning restrictions and had several maps. And, uh, one of the most restrictive maps had one place in town where you could have a cannabis store away from schools, away from residences. And so that is something that we can look at again. I'm sure those maps are out there if we ever wanted to look at that again.
Looked way in on that a little bit. We also, yeah, we also looked at the time at how much tax revenue we were looking at getting. I think it was less than $300, um, given that we had that one site. So it wasn't all that. And then the prediction was that we would have pot chop show up as two toadstools all the way around town and, um, closer to the nearest one on the city limits now to my house if I wanted to go to it than if we put it in one spot in town that we had identified. So, um, I mean, we can revisit it, but I don't think we're looking at the loss of a whole lot of revenue. Unless things have changed. I mean, we're, we're, what, eight years down the road, there may be more revenue available now.
Councilmember Burke?
Yeah, and it's not necessarily so much of the loss of revenue that's generated within the city limits. But if there is a broader pool that we may be, you know, banned or restricted from accessing, I think that that is definitely a revenue source that we should be, be thinking about.
That's true.
And I can clarify, there's actually two pools of funding. There's one from the actual shops, but then there's another appropriation of dollars that regardless if you have them or not, if you do not have a banned place, you would be eligible for a per capita basis of.
Yeah, statewide funding. Any other new, uh, new business or information items? Councilmember Guzzi?
Yes, I, I just wanted a little more follow-up relative to, um, the surveillance system and flock and what, what that's about.
So I'll have, uh, Chief come up. This is a very specific, uh, system. It is flock cameras, it's not for the parks. We are looking at surveillance for the parks separately, not surveillance, but looking at reducing vandalism. But maybe if Chief wants, Chief wants to come up. This was funding that council approved in the budget. And it's in partnership with law enforcement across Snohomish County. There are policies and procedures in place and it's only for three intersections. So Chief?
Uh, good evening, Council. Yeah, the, um, now Flock does provide lots of different cameras out there, so I can't speak to all they have. But what we are looking at are specifically license plate readers. Uh, it captures the information on the license plate. It doesn't recognize, um, faces, it doesn't recognize anything like that. It's just the license plate. So, um, which is, we've seen, you know, a, a recent increase in people stealing license plates to try and, you know, trick the system or defeat it. But that's what it is for, um, these particular ones. Um, as far as the information gathered for it, unless we collect that information and use it in some sort of investigation, we're not, um, it's not our responsibility to retain it or handle any of that. The system has that into a certain time period, however we select it, and then it purges the info. So it's not something we can go back years and look to see. I mean, that's basically what it's for. It's there for us to have that if we need it, but also it can send us alerts. So if we have an amber alert or a silver alert and we know a vehicle description, it, we can pick it up and it communicates in real time. So, um, we've seen a lot of success. Everett has, I think, about 80 cameras in their city. Lake Stevens is getting them, Monroe is getting them. So it's, it's a handy tool to kind of prevent, um, us, you know, old-fashioned having to go out and chase cars when we can just use technology, um, to kind of locate where it's at and get ahead of it. So that's the main function.
And again, I'll clarify, we are just putting them at three intersections. They are fixed cameras, they are not following people, it's on a vehicle. Um, and the city owns or has access, or the police department, specified staff at the police department have access to the information. The county cannot access it, the state cannot access it, the federal government cannot access it. It is our police department that has access to that equipment.
Yes. Is it open to public records request? If information is used, um, that's used in an investigation, that's added to a report, yeah, it should be available to public records just like anything else. But, um, generally in terms of it, no, because if we're not collecting that data and using it, it's just, it's in the system until it purges it. Thank you.
And I would mention that another thing that's been seen as a value of the system is the ability to enter a license plate for someone that's known for, um, who, who has, someone has a protection order against or something like that. And they can then notify, um, the person who is at risk.
Yes, essentially any, um, suspect vehicle, if we have a license plate for, it can be entered in there and get an alert. So, you know, it wouldn't even have to necessarily be us if there's, you know, an unfortunate, you know, a homicide in Everett and suddenly that suspect vehicle has come through Snohomish, we would get the alert that that's where it happened. With the, you know, point being, we then communicate that and get that. But it works for things like domestic violence. So instead of having to wait for a 911 call because, you know, a person is breaking into the house like we do now, we could get the alert, they've entered town before they even get there and hopefully head them off. That's, that's really the goal. I mean, there's a multitude of ways it can be used, but it's for the plate and the vehicle, um, not for faces or anything like that.
Any further questions for Chief?
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Councilmember comments. Should we just start with number one and go down the?
Number one is tired and there's no comments.
Number two?
Quickly, this is a PSA. Uh, 2:00 PM on Saturday at the Grand Army of Republic Cemetery, there's a flag retiring ceremony. And as all you, we are all good patriots here. So if you have a beat-up flag, and I do, um, it gets retired with dignity and the respect it deserves. So 2:00 PM Saturday. And if you can't make it, because I couldn't, I've already, there's a box and you can put your flag in there and it'll be treated appropriately on Saturday, 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. Number three?
You can also take those flags to the American Legion and they'll do that for you. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Number five?
No comments.
Nope. Number seven? I don't have any. Then we'll go to Council President.
Very minimal comment, uh, but last week I went to the Community Transit Awards banquet and presented an award to the, um, uh, individuals at, uh, Community Transit picked out to be the exemplify, the company or the agency at the time and retired as a board chair.
All right, and I just wanted to point out that there is a staff briefing in the packet from our Director Heaton. So please read and let us know if you have any questions. City administrators comments?
I'll be fast. A reminder, you heard a couple times tonight, March 20th from four to seven in Carnegie, we have the city projects open house. And then on March 27th, we will have the First Street Visioning, um, kind of open house for the community also from four to 7:00 PM. And then, um, some positive news, we received word, um, we did receive some, uh, Puget Sound Regional Council funding. It's some federal dollars for the Bickford and Weaver intersection improvement. Uh, we just found out it's getting increased. So instead of 394,000, we're getting 788,000. So, giveth and taketh away. The, again, good news, bad news. Good news, the federal government did not shut down Friday. Uh, bad news is the continuing resolution went through the rest of fiscal year '25. That means our $3 million for community project funding for the infrastructure went with it. So that money is not awarded. Congresswoman Del Benny's office notified us yesterday. Um, they're looking at other grant opportunities and funding asks for FY '26, which is officially October. Right now, we're waiting. The bid opening is on Monday for the infrastructure and we'll see what those dollars are. Right now, we're under budget for some of our work on the infrastructure and we believe we can absorb that at this point. But we will report to council once we see those bid openings and look at the financial impact. But I wanted to give council that heads up right now. That's it.
All right, Council, I don't have any comments tonight. I already shared Jack's letter and I think that was enough. Um, we're going to go ahead and recess to executive session to discuss legal risk of proposed action pursuant to RCW 423110, subsection one, subsection I, subsection III, III. No action is anticipated to follow. So I would like to ask for a motion from council to adjourn the meeting at the end of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So just for those in attendance, so they are aware, council will now adjourn to executive session and we will not return, the council, uh, the meeting will be adjourned. We anticipate, uh, this meeting to be, or the executive session to be 15 minutes. We will notify the clerk if we have to extend. The clerk will announce, um, but no one will be returning to the chambers, just so you know. But no one will be returning to the chambers, just so you know. All right. Thank you.